I would go check on the chair real quick to see if we are ready to go.
I'm off camera before I finish my lunch.
You're good. Chair should be joining momentarily.
Clerk Moss, if you could promote Jiggy for the leadership update continuation.
Absolutely. All right, welcome back, commissioners and Chair Harrington, back to you to start this afternoon.
Okay, commissioners, I think we left off at leadership communication. Ms. Angie, before we get to the thank you letters, was there anything else you wanted to go over with us today?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. No, there's not. Just to let you know, I will be forwarding information tomorrow to you all as a follow-up from Jenny Proctor's update.
Yeah, there were sure a lot of numbers in that. I know I couldn't play it back and pass that test. Alrighty, so on the thank you letters, we were sent those as one of our bonus items. They've also been included into our packet. These are the letters from our government relations as developed from our government relations team to help us thank the various state legislators here in Washington County. Is Jiggy? Oh, there he is. Thank you. So I just want to note that in our packet, I was able to see that there was a letter to Representative Prusak. It just hadn't been bookmarked when I specifically was looking through this morning unless perhaps I missed the bookmark. I don't know how to search the bookmarks. I haven't tried that before, but the letter was there. So, thank you. I just want to double check the letters that went into the packet, other than making sure that there was that correction for the Rep. Prusak letter. Were there any other changes to the other letters? Because I read the first.
Other round.
Okay, thank you. So I'm up to speed on that. Alrighty. Commissioners, any questions or comments for our government relations team? I know Commissioner Treese, I saw you give a thumbs up. Okay, thumbs up Commissioner Phi. Thumbs up Commissioner Rogers. Willie, and I'm looking down at Rogers.
I'm eating, but I'm okay.
Okay, good.
This on the letters.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. So Jiggy, thank you to you and the team for putting together this really great roster of letters. I appreciated how each of these had a level of customization. It wasn't just to our Washington County delegation, but also to the leadership that weighed in on various important programs and funding for Washington County programs. So I join my colleagues in a full double thumbs up for using our digital signatures and getting all those letters off.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioners.
Job well done. Thank you. Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Carr.
Good afternoon, Chair. I don't have much to add. I did want to note about the order that Ms. Angie mentioned this morning requiring masks. The order requires masks of all employees and visitors to city buildings and, sorry, county buildings and county outdoor facilities. It does not generally require the public to wear masks. We are going to bring the order to the commission on August 17th, asking that it be made permanent. In the past, we've operated under a series of temporary orders, and the thought was it would be better if there was some permanence. And the order is drafted so that it's self-triggering. It would trigger whenever we had a communicable disease in the county that exceeds the CDC's level for substantial transmission, which is 50 new cases in the previous seven days per 100,000 residents. Which is where we are. We're well above that right now. So we'll be putting that in the packet for the commission to read, and you will have it up for discussion on August 17th and potential adoption. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Mr. Carr, does that mean that there is also a time when it expires? Is there a certain level? I assume there is a minimum when the mask mandate retire goes on.
It would not be effective if we were below 50 new cases per seven days per 100,000 residents.
And this is only with employees and within our building, correct?
Correct.
And could I also ask, as part of that, will there be a system for us visually and visitors to know, like on our county website, when when such a situation occurs?
We are.
Set the doors or something? I mean, how else are we to know?
Our excellent communications and facility staff has been on top of that. You may have noticed, Chair Harrington, when you walked into the building this morning, the sign had returned requiring mask wearing in the building for all entrance. And we've advertised this. And as Ms. Angie mentioned this morning, more importantly, she has communicated this to city managers so that our peers in other governments know that we're doing this.
Well, I'll say I didn't do a very good job. I certainly noticed the sign when I came into the Board of Commissioners offices, but I hadn't noticed one prior to that. But the good news is I had a mask on.
There is one outside. I noticed it when I came in this morning. And I was quite proud of our facilities folks getting up so quickly.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I understand where we're trying to go with this, looking for the trigger point, but what happens when one week we exceed it, and then the next week we don't? And then the week after that, we exceeded. So we're on this little roller coaster. So we're either wearing masks, or we're not wearing masks, or something. So do we have some sort of a rollout thing so we can level that off?
We don't. I believe that the 50 per 100,000 is in itself a rollout. I think we're over 75 per 100,000 right now. It took a while for us to build up to that. So it's an arbitrary number picked by the CDC, which is a substantial level of transmission. Because, and remember, it's a rolling seven-day average. So there will obviously be some point at which we cross it. It hasn't been, and Marnie Kyle would be a much better person to speak about this than me, but it hasn't been my experience that we've gone back and forth. We have been on trends where we go up and we peak at a much higher number and then come down after a bell curve.
All right, I just don't want us to flatline at 5149, 5149. So the signs go up, the signs come down, the signs go up, you know?
Yeah.
So I'm sure we can react to that, but.
Agreed. But the idea was that people are probably getting a little tired of temporary orders and us turning things on and off. And we wanted to give them some clarification and an opportunity for the board to actually act on this, rather than just having Ms. Angie do it.
Okay.
Chair Harrington and Mr. Carr, if I can just add to our public health team is committed to keeping the dashboard updated on our website. So there's transparency, not only at the building doors on communication, but then also on our website. Commissioner Willie, I and staff also agree with the yo-yo approach of on and off. And so there is thought being put into this. So it's, there's consistency as well.
I have nothing further, Chair.
Thank you. And I'm gonna have to redouble my efforts in paying attention to the back door. Alrighty. Mr. Jockers, it looks like you're here to cover Clean Water Services today.
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of Clean Water Services Board of Directors. I'm stepping in for Diane today, who is out. I am echoing what Ms. Angie said. It is Groundhog's Day. We are doing the same thing here at Clean Water Services. Effective yesterday, we instituted our face covering policy for common areas within Clean Water Services, as well as requiring them of visitors within our facilities as we watch these case counts continue to go up. I know that Diane has shared some information with you, Chair, and perhaps others, in terms of our sewer surveillance work. We will be providing a summary to the board as part of the Privy Council tomorrow to kind of show you what we have been seeing over the last week. As you can imagine, we are seeing a pretty significant uptick in evidence of COVID within the sewage that goes to each of the four water resource recovery facilities here in Washington County. We provide that data weekly to the Health Department to help inform decisions that they make as well and coordinating closely with them. Finally, related to that is last week, the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, which is an organization that we are very active in with public wastewater and stormwater utilities here in the state of Oregon, a bit surprisingly, made a special award to Dr. Ken Williamson, Dr. Tyler Radke, and Dr. Christine Kelly. Tyler and Christine are research scientists at Oregon State University, and together with Dr. Williamson secured the National Science Foundation funding for the sewer surveillance work. And in those last 15 months, they're out of pace right now, where they have about two or three papers that are about ready to be reviewed for publishing. Kind of the results of what we've been able to determine from the research here in Washington County and in other places that we've assisted around the state on. So that's terrific. We'll have a little bit more information about that tomorrow in the Privy Council as well. And that's.
Yeah, if you could pause for me for just a moment. I'm realizing that I find myself in a different situation than prior. Our teams for Washington County and Clean Water Services have done such a tremendous job over these 18 months in bringing us the science, in supporting our community, in safeguarding employees, in getting vaccinations deployed, available for employees through our community. It's just been tremendous. I guess what I'm coming to is we finally got to that point in July where things could reopen again, and that was just four weeks ago. And so I knew our public health teams were continuing to support vaccinations. And of course, the sewer surveillance work was continuing. And then concerned about this Delta variant. I find myself, and I stopped with that reopening. I stopped looking at the dashboards available through OHA on, you know, an every-other-day basis. I know it was more often than weekly that I looked at that. And so it's interesting, hearing the three of our leadership team members speaking to the state of affairs. I find myself wondering, is the current level of transmission elevated due to the Delta variant? Or is there also the more prevalence, the Alpha version, the original, whatever people want to refer to it? Has that level of case spread increased as well? And I am asking this, I understood from you previously, Ms. Angie, ah, and there's our public health expert, our public health administrator. I think that's the current term right now. So, yeah, I find myself wondering about that transmission level so that I can appreciate the context that you're all trying to help us manage through at this point. And I need to get back on that COVID treadmill. And I don't want to. Marnie, do you have any information that might help set me straight?
Sure. And I am also working on an email briefing for the board to get to you in the next couple of days and more information about what we're trying to do through our communications channels. But, so Chair Harrington, you're right. The Delta variant has really expediated the transmission of this virus again within our community. And what's contributing to that is we still have a significant number of people who are unvaccinated. And the unvaccinated population and the ease at which this variant has transmitted, it's been likened to chicken pox. If we can all remember when we were kids, how easily chicken pox was transmitted. And this is just as easily transmitted. Now, the new concern, what we're learning as we look at other areas of the country with, and some other areas internationally, is that although it's not as easily transmitted by people who have been vaccinated, there are breakthrough cases among vaccinated populations. And they can transmit the Delta variant. So it's not as easily transmitted. But that is why there's this new mandate, or not, I'm sorry, not mandate, but new strong recommendation that all of us need to wear a mask when we're indoors. Largely, that's to protect vulnerable, unvaccinated populations. Remember, kids under 12 can't be vaccinated. And many adults are choosing not to be vaccinated. And so to protect them from severe illness, hospitalization, and death, all of us need to contribute by wearing our mask. What everyone needs to do, if you're not already vaccinated, we really, really strongly urge people to get vaccinated because the vaccine does an amazing job of protecting you from severe illness, hospitalization, or death. Well over 99% of the hospitalizations and deaths are in unvaccinated populations. And I might have missed part of your question because I was in that swirling get-on mode.
So one of my wonderings was with the level of, and I appreciated Mr. Carr making sure I had it clear in my mind that we, our level of our level of transmission, the level of transmission in our community is substantial.
Yes.
I think I hadn't noticed that we'd crossed that threshold here in Washington County. The level of community spread, is it primarily this Delta variant, or is it a mixture, including with the more prevalent affluent? I mean, Alpha number?
So it is the Delta variant that is primarily contributing to this rapid increase in transmission and spread in the state of Oregon and in Washington County.
Okay. Bummer.
It is a bummer, and I just can't stress enough, it's primarily among unvaccinated populations. So our most important message is everyone needs to be vaccinated that's eligible. Anybody over the age of 12 should be vaccinated, have a conversation with your doctor, with your pharmacist. And everyone should be wearing masks when you're in an indoor setting.
And if I could ask one last question and hopefully clear. So I'm vaccinated. But there is the risk, there's a very small risk that I could get sick from the Delta variant. But is it possible that I might be contagious to others with that variant, even though I'm vaccinated, even though I may not show any symptoms ever?
Yes. So if you're vaccinated, your risk of being infected is lower, but it is possible. And if you become infected, even if you're asymptomatic, you could transmit it to others, to unvaccinated populations in particular. It's less likely, but it is possible.
Okay. Alrighty.
And we have an update scheduled for the 17th. And you'll be getting an email from me every Friday for a while until we get through this other bump here.
Thank you. Thank you for setting me straight. I have tremendous faith in our public health team and across the agency in the level of communication and in the level of servicing. But I really appreciate, not only you, but also of my colleagues, being patient with me here to get straight on my basic questions so that I understand the situation between now and August 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any further questions from Marnie or any other information needs? Okay. Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Jockers, for ceding the floor on that. Did you have anything else that you wanted to bring forward to us today?
No, Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll look forward to receiving your Privy Council as well. Alrighty, then I believe we, oops, it's 1:00. So we're now at time certain. So we're going to hold topic number three, well, the original topic three on the expanded recycling collection services and move on to topics four and five, given that each of those are time certain. So the first one will be the City of Tuolleton Urban Renewal Plan Proposal. And Commissioners, please know that the packet material changed yesterday. I know I haven't had a chance to look at the new material yet because I was off yesterday. So I'll turn it over to somebody. Stephen Roberts.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation for the county. And I'd like to introduce to Tuolleton City Manager, Sherilyn Lambos, and the city's Economic Development Manager, Jonathan Taylor, who are gonna run through the presentation. And they're also joined by Elaine Howard, who's a consultant, who's working with the city on their urban renewal proposals. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Sherilyn.
Sorry to interrupt for a moment. I'm gonna go off camera because I haven't had a chance to eat my lunch yet, but I'll be here and listening.
Thank you.
Just didn't want to be rude.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Sherilyn Lambos, and I am the city manager here in Tuolleton. Mayor Bubinick sends his regrets as he is tied up with his day job. I am joined today, as Stephen said, by Jonathan Taylor, our Economic Development Manager, and Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting, who will do the bulk of the presentation. But before I set them loose, I wanted to highlight a couple of things. So first, we feel very proud of our history of urban renewal here in Tuolleton. We have had two very successful districts in Tuolleton that are shining examples of how best to use a tool like tax increment financing. We believe that we have been excellent stewards of this tool and now wish to utilize it again to encourage appropriate development in an area we have been working on together with Washington County for almost 20 years. So that's the second thing I wanted to highlight, is that we've been working on the Southwest Concept Plan and the Salt Creek Development Areas with Washington County and our neighboring cities for many, many years. The county has invested heavily in this area, both in planning, as well as tens of millions of dollars in transportation infrastructure. Your commitment to this area is humbling, and we are excited to have this tool to further advance those efforts. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'll turn it over to Jonathan Taylor, our Economic Development Manager, to continue.
Thanks, Sherilyn. So good evening. I'm used to doing city council meetings, so it's a little bit odd for me. So good afternoon. So my name is Jonathan Taylor. I am, as Sherilyn said, working on urban renewal on behalf of the City of Tuolleton, along with Elaine Howard, our consultant. And as Sherilyn was saying, we've had a long history of working with urban renewal. And we've been very successful. And I can't change the screen, so there we go. So in working with Chris at the county, we are coming today to ask for your support and ultimately for your consideration to help approve an urban renewal in the southwest of the Salt Creek area. And the reason that we have to come to you is part of our proposed urban renewal area includes unincorporated areas. And so today, as required by ORS 5457, we are consulting, conferring with our overlapping taxing districts for this proposed plan. And so today is a work session for you to ask questions regarding our process, proposed projects and boundaries because of the inclusion of the urban renewal area and unincorporated. Next slide. So today's purpose is, obviously because of the consultant confer period, does the Board of Commissioners wish to provide input on this proposed plan? And does the board ultimately support the adoption of the proposed plan with the inclusion of incorporated areas? And then after today's presentation, does the Board of Commissioners need additional information regarding this project? Next slide. So as Sherilyn was saying, we've had two great experiences with urban renewal. So we have Leventon Tax Increment District, which is probably one of the most well-known urban renewal greenfield developments in the state. It's been highly sourced as one of the best practices for greenfield development. And then obviously, the picture is incorrect, but the central urban renewal district in our downtown area that changed the former Hervin Food Company into the Town Commons. Next slide. So a little bit of background, Leventon Tax Increment District was established in 1985. It included over 200 acres of unincorporated greenfields, so similar to what we're doing today. It prioritized four goals of industrial development, protection of the environment, improved transportation and traffic, and then provide public utilities. And the original assessed valuation at the time for those 200 acres was $3.5 million. And then on the right side, you can see the current district that we'll get into a little bit later, obviously, with this presentation as well. Next slide. So where are we at, at Leventon? So we ceased collection in 2010, but it is still an active, well, it's not an active district, but it's an active urban renewal area, and we have proposed plans to help further the success of that district. One of the key. One of the key, I guess, key successes that the City of Tuolleton is very proud about is it increased the assessed value by $251 million over that course of the district. It completed 14 of the 20 projects, and some of the notable projects included the Herman Road Improvements and brand new street construction of 118th, Leventon, and 124th. Uh, today, it's home to over 50 businesses and includes 9,000 jobs, and it's one of the primary employment regional centers in the Portland metro area. And some of the larger businesses notable in this area is Lamb Research. Next slide. So this is the correct photo of the Central Urban Renewal District, but it was established in 1975. And the difference between Leventon and Central Urban Renewal is it took 300 acres of redevelopment and converted the Herbin Food Company into the Tuolleton Commons. It prioritized 11 goals, but some of those included commercial development, housing development, pedestrian and bikeways, and then design considerations, which is a town identity. The original assessed valuation is $14 million in 1975. Next slide. So the success of Central Urban Renewal District is ceased collection in 2010 as well, but we recently terminated the plan last year. Uh, it took 327 total city acres and redeveloped them, 41 of 60 projects were completed, $180 million increase in valuation, and some of the notable achievements included the Tuolleton Commons, Tuolleton Sherwood Bypass, Nyberg I-5 Interchange. We expanded our core area parking with public parking, and then the Tuolleton City Library. And then obviously with the Pumpkin Regatta, that's one of the most well-known events in Oregon, it's established a lot of community pride for our area. Next slide. As Cheryl was saying, we have decades of work in the southwest of the Salt Creek Development Area. Um, in 2005, along with the help of Washington County, we adopted the 12, uh, the Southwest Tuolleton Concept Plan, and obviously it was updated in 2010. We have our Transportation System Plan, which was adopted in 2014. Uh, the Salt Creek Concept Plan, adopted in 2019, and then Tuolleton 2040, which focused on our economic and housing needs analysis, that was also adopted in 2019 as well. So a lot of work has went into this area and a lot of collaborative regional partnerships, as well as a lot of public outreach. Next slide. So how we got to this, in addition to the decades worth of work, is we've taken a slow and methodical approach on how to best realize what is needed in this area, how to finance those efforts. So in 2018, we started very, very small. It, well, when I say small, the larger, grander scheme of things, but it was a big undertaking for the City of Tuolleton. In 2017 to 2018, the City of Tuolleton was looking at the Development Code modernization, and that grew into Tuolleton 2040, which was the EOA and the HMA. And in 2019, we led our new council, which included a lot of new faces, but as well as a lot of staff, on an education series of what urban renewal is and can do. We also closed and terminated the Central Urban Renewal District. In Phase Three, so last year, we conducted some feasibility studies, we conducted two. One was in the area that you're seeing today, and another one is where it's in the Central Urban Renewal Area. And then this year, we worked with local businesses for the last three years to identify the Leventon Projects, but for this particular um, effort, we did a lot of uh, visioning and plan adoption, so we're here today. Obviously, with this particular set of work, we know that there's gonna be a lot more future work in this area as well. Next slide. So when we originally started out, the project goal for whatever we decided to do in this area was to develop an urban renewal plan to finance and implement identified projects from existing area development. So that included the Salt Creek Concept Plan, the Tuolleton Southwest Concept Plan, the Transportation System Plan, and Tuolleton 2040. We kicked this off last year in November, and we had, uh, this one says three, but we ended up having four task force meetings, along with a community forum, um, that was to hold like, efforts of what the city was doing in the Salt Creek Concept Area, what our approaches are, and to provide feedback. In June, the Tuolleton Development Commission approved, as well as the Planning Commission in July. Through the month of July, we had an open house where we sought feedback from the public. We met with our citizen involvement organizations to get feedback, what they anticipate, what their major concerns are. And then today, we are presenting to you during this work session, and our, our plan is to have this plan adopted and implemented in September. Next slide. As I mentioned, we had four uh, task force meetings. It was seven members established by the Tuolleton Development Commission that provided recommendations for the proposed boundary and projects, and to review the proposed uh, plan financials. They met over four meetings beginning in March, and the proposed boundary and projects were voted and recommended by the task force. The task force members included Janelle Thompson of the Tuolleton Planning Commission, Cassandra Olvin, Chief Cassandra Olvin from Tuolleton Valley Fire and Rescue, Bryce Lucchini, a property owner, Councilor Sacco from the Tuolleton City Council, Teresa Haskins, uh, property owner representative of PGE, and Jillian Felton, property owner representative from Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Next slide. Just a brief recap of how we got here. On June 28th, the Tuolleton Development Commission approved a resolution formally approving the public review process, and this is consultant confer 45-day period. On July 15th, the Tuolleton Planning Commission found that the southwest of the Salt Creek Development Plan conformed with our Development Code, as well as the Tuolleton Comprehensive Plan. Their recommendation will be considered by the Tuolleton City Council on August 9th. Next slide. So I'm gonna turn it over to Elaine Howard to speak a little bit more in-depth about our plan and how we are moving forward.
Thank you Jonathan, and thank you for allowing me to present for you. The plan goals that were developed for this plan included uh, public involvement, and as Jonathan said, a lot of that public involvement occurred, um, not only in the development of this plan, but all of those past plans upon which this plan is predicated. Goal two was employment land development. Goal three, transportation infrastructure. Goal four, utility infrastructure. And goal five, developer assistance and incentives. Next slide. This is the proposed area. Uh, it is about 717 acres, and it encompasses both the southwest planning area and the Basalt Creek area. It is tied together through uh, cherry stem that you can see on the left-hand side of the map. Next slide. These are what the zoning designations are within the area, and you can see that most of the area is zone industrial and is intended for um, job development. There is some residential in the area, a small bit of commercial, and the no designation is on property that is not incorporated within the city, and part of the reason why the city needs your approval of the plan. Next slide. The city must conform to the statutory requirements on percentages of both acreage and assessed value. And they are limited to 25% in each area, and you can see the acreage on this is a little under 14%, and the assessed value is only 2%, so a very small percent of the total assessed value of the city. Next slide. These are the proposed projects in the plan. As we went through the process with the committee, there was im- input from TVFNR especially, supporting infrastructure projects within the area, and making sure that those projects would be projects that would provide capacity for new development. So we began by looking at projects that were all of the projects listed in the Basalt Creek and Southwest Concept Plan documents, knowing that we had uh, to cut those down considerably because the maximum indebtedness of this plan was not high enough to be able to cover all of those projects. So uh, the city looked at the total project list and recommended which projects they would rec- recommend that the task force review, and part of that was because of other potential city funding sources for some of the other projects, and the need for these specific projects to be able to provide the infrastructure necessary for the area to develop fully in the future. Next slide. The proposed maximum indebtedness for the area is $53,200,000. It is a 30-year plan term, and it does have uh, duration provision within the plan. It is uh, written with a 6% projected assessed value growth. The total net tax increment revenues exceed that $53 million figure because there is uh, anticipated that there will be interest on borrowings over the lifetime of the plan. As in all urban renewal areas, you can see that years one through five, the amount of tax increment funds that are expected um, is only $600,000, but that grows as the area grows and as some of that infrastructure is able to be completed and new development happens, and that 3% assessed value um, grows over time. Next slide. You can see here, the arc of this area is arc of most typical urban renewal areas, again, where it starts off slowly and grows over time. The projected impact to Washington County of this um, district is projected to be a little under $12.7 million over that 30-year duration. Um, next slide. The next steps in the review of this is we are currently under the 45-day consult and confer period, um, having this work session with you. The city council will have their public hearing on August 9th. The Washington County Board of Commissioners will um, are slated at this point to consider consideration of the resolution on August 17th, and on August 23rd, the Tuolleton City Council will review the potential adoption of the urban renewal area. Uh, next slide. Are there, we, we, we have this presentation for this area, we have a short presentation on the Leventon area. On the Leventon area, we do not need any action from the county, we just want to inform you as required by statute of what is happening in that area. And again, in Leventon, there are no impacts on taxing districts because they are no longer taking division of tax revenues. So we thought we would pause here and see if there are questions on this area before we proceed to the other area.
Thank you for that, I, I think your approach of pausing now for uh, questions and discussion on the uh, Southwest and Basalt Creek Area Plan is a good approach. Commissioner Rogers, uh, do you have anything you want to start with, or do you want me to call on other Commissioners first?
It's up to you. I, yeah, as, as I mentioned earlier, I had about a 40-year history, history with this area, so I know it quite well, happy to have some input. Want that now? Or maybe, yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any questions uh, on the information as presented? Go ahead Commissioner Thrice.
Thank you for the presentation, it's, it's great, and Tuolleton has had a long history of being active, proactive in this regard, so thank you for that. My question is about million dollars for small businesses, I'm, I'm just curious how you came to that number, and what your thoughts are, and I'm, I guess I would look to Jonathan for his uh, response there, just curious why that number, and um, is it enough? And, you know, all the questions that uh, anybody interested in economic development might ask.
Uh, Commissioner Thrice, thank you for that question. So as, as the Board of Commissioners know, uh, the City of Tuolleton partnered with you last year to launch the BRCs, and so one of the ways that we got to those uh, those ideas is our city council used non-tax increment financing from our urban renewal to do one of the first city's business assistance grants last year during COVID-19 lockdown. And so we learned from experience that we can be very proactive in the unforeseen, and I think 2020 really showed us how we can be very proactive. I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't think that a million dollars is going to be what is needed over the life of the 30-year loan, but there are a lot of other major projects the city needs to do in order to realize the development. The proposed area is only one of three urban reserves for employment on this, in Washington County, and so we, we're taking a more proactive look. As for the million dollars, our goal is to help the aging capital infrastructure of those existing buildings that were built in the 1990s and early 80s, to make them more attractive for future development. As we know, parking is going to be an issue moving forward, and we actually don't know what that's gonna look like. Is there gonna be less parking or more parking? Because I think employment is going to change after COVID and how that works. And so um, we feel comfortable with the million dollars, but obviously, this is, it's gonna be more of a targeted approach, and how do you maximize those dollars for long-term benefit for both the area and the business?
Thank you.
Other Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead Commissioner Willie.
Uh, it's just a comment, um, I'm certainly familiar with uh, urban renewal districts uh, from mayor days of the City of Hillsborough, I'm a big fan of them, and um, really think they, they are a great financing tool for getting some development done, so congratulations on this, uh, and certainly your work, and we look forward to you completing some of these projects and getting this ball moving, uh, after you've planned on it for all these years, and when Rory was still in high school evidently, or something, so.
I, I'd be happy to chime in now. Full disclosure, Geraldine and myself and Frank, the mayor, we had lunch last week and talked a bit about this, and um, just a real quick walk down memory lane to tell you where I am today, uh, because I may not be with the rest of you on this particular project. Leventon Property, I was mayor when we brought that in. Downtown, I was mayor when we formed it, and we did that for good reason, and uh, took out the dog food factory, and that was a very interesting conversation. We also took out, for those of you who don't know, a clubhouse for Brother Speed, and we had to put him up with what was in the Nyberg Inn, which was a, a very interesting relocation project, because you had all bikers outside of what then was a fairly nice hotel, and people saying, what's going on? So that was kind of a, a very different. Uh, Leventon, that was a great project, even though a, a lot of us on the council, myself as mayor, were chastised significantly by local farmers for ruining their uh, their property out there, we knew it had long-term impact, so, uh, we're not talking about Leventon yet, but I, I do support it, I think it's been a terrific uh, uh, project. I have a bit of problem, and I told this to Cheryl and to Frank on this project, uh, for the South, and this has nothing to do with your staff work, I think you guys have been excellent, you've been wonderful partners, we've all cooperated over many, many years. But uh, what has happened out of that area, for those of you who don't know, there was a little term called the bypass, you really wanna go back a long time. We had a frontage road right next to I-5 that came on in Norwood, uh, we wanted to bypass downtown Tuolleton because the only in and out to the freeway is what? Uh, Nyberg and Tuolleton Sherwood. So we tried to get some interest, we couldn't get a lot of interest, but uh, the project got hijacked and didn't just go to 99W, all of a sudden it was all the way through Washington County, over the hill, and into Washington State, and so it kind of died of its own weight. But we knew that there was significant property that needed to be addressed, and an outlet uh, for this town who was growing, and has continued to grow in significant amounts. So let's fast forward, um, Metro was asked to add some industrial property, some brown, uh, they looked at this, which by the way, if those of you who were there, you know, but others may not, the acreage down there- The acreage down there is as big as Troutdale by far expansion, as big as Hillsborough expansion. It's a huge area. And there was a bit of claim to the area by both the City of Twalton and the City of Wilsonville. I was in many meetings. Carl Hostka was with the Metro Council at first and Craig Dirksen followed up. And then, and it's a problem when you have lots of changes and, you know, people, you get different understanding of what happened. And I get to be a little bit of the historian, but we met in Wilsonville with then Mayor Tim Knapp. And the Twalton mayor was logged in and we had many knockdown meetings. And these meetings really were around what was the boundary between the north and the south, meaning Wilsonville wanted to go way north and Twalton wanted to kind of put some kind of a break there, some kind of firewalls. It was agreed that there would be a Basalt Creek Parkway extension. And what we all decided to do, we put about a hundred million bucks collectively. The City of Twalton is a leader. They've done a great job. We get down that hundred and twenty-fourth, bring a whole new way to get into an industrial area. Plus go over to the freeway. Wilsonville was very insistent that they have both sides of Basalt Creek because they didn't think Twalton would manage it well. I was on the other side of the coin arguing Twalton would do a terrific job of managing it. And we finally established a line in which we said, okay, we'll all commit to this for future generations. And that was the whole idea between the Basalt Creek Parkway. What we now have, for those of you who haven't been in that part of the county, is a hundred and twenty-fourth that essentially goes nowhere towards that freeway. Because that last leg hasn't been built. We have a number of federal funds committed to that and Chris Deffenbacher, anyone else can correct me, but from my understanding, Metro is getting a little antsy about that and the funds are not being committed the way that we thought they would be committed. And so they're in a bit of jeopardy. Wilsonville is kind of telling, saying, I told you so. Because Twalton has allowed not only development of a residential area, but continued residential area that's kind of abut that right. And all of you know that if you have a big road in the backyard, you don't like it. So hence, all of a sudden, term limits, got two mayors and a bunch of council members. We've got a whole new council and they're saying, maybe we don't like this so much. Well, the problem is, is if that's what we're doing, the county has put a lot of money into a project that was not appropriate for them to do. Because what's going to happen and what's the consequence of all this? Is that Nyberg and Twalton Sherwood will continue to be the outlet. And guess whose road that is? The county. And guess what's happened over the years? The city is, it's no fault of theirs. It's just what it worked. Has built and abutted that highway. So the only way you can really get any relief is put another parallel road in or start condemning one heck of a lot of business along the way. So the county's got a lot of skin in this game and a hundred and twelve million dollars that we're saying we're going to lose incrementally. That's just a tip of the spear. Start expanding the Twalton Sherwood Road of another couple of lanes all the way out and you're going to see another fifty to a hundred million bucks real quick. So what I would love to happen, this is just me and Cheryl can tell you that I fought a whole bunch to get your Herman Road improvements de-federalized. We took that on as a county, so you could kind of change the color of money and do some improvements that you needed to do. We've been really, really good partners, but I would love to do is see some acknowledgement that the city council acknowledges that Basalt Creek Parkway. And that they support it. Because if they don't, then I think we still have continued problems with our city partners in Wilsonville. Metro Council spent a lot of time and a lot of effort to get this area serviced. And the Washington County, not only through some things that they did to get Boons Ferry repaved, but a hundred and twenty-fourth, and now you're asking for Blake. And by the way, I support Blake. That needs to be extended. That's a great project. We need to, we need to get some understanding that it's not going to be changing every five, ten years. There's just too much money involved. We've invested way too much, way too long. So I'm preaching at the staff, which that's not their fault. You all are good people and it's certainly not your fault. I think the council there needs to make some commitment before we give up twelve million dollars, we mean the county, plus subjecting us to a continued expansion of Twalton Sherwood and Nyberg. Where you have an easy solution. And that would be let's carry forth on the project, let's continue to go after the federal funds. Let's keep that project alive that was committed to by a prior city council and not only Twalton, but in Wilsonville. So where am I at? I'm not thrilled that there's no mention of it. You know, Wilsonville, I think, committed, correct me, Chris or Steven, what, twenty or twenty-five million dollars? I mean, they're in. Yeah, so we, we need Twalton, in my opinion, to be in as well. So it's a long bunch of comments, but I'm concerned about it.
Commissioner Rogers, I would just say, I know specifically to Basalt Creek Parkway, City of Wilsonville's committed five hundred thousand dollars to date for that project to help with local matching for a larger federal ask.
Would it be appropriate, could I just make a comment or Chair Harrington?
Well, first, I would like to ask our commissioners if they have any questions or comments for what we just heard from Commissioner Rogers. Because I didn't. Well, let me pause for a second. I heard Commissioner Rogers ask you to correct him if he got anything wrong. So was there anything, Ms. Lombos, that you wanted to correct him on?
No, ma'am. I was more just going to comment on some of the concerns that the existing council has and.
So can we pause that for a second? Since we're in the period of questions and discussion from the commission. Commissioners, before I speak, since you've all had the opportunity to, is there anything that you wanted to ask of Commissioner Rogers before I speak? So we've all at least had a chance to. Okay, well, then I'll go next. Commissioner Rogers, thank you for the information that you offered because of the questions that I had. My first one was to ask you to comment on the lack of transportation funding contribution in this urban renewal. And also to ask what you thought of the county. If the county is the board, if the county board is to support this urban renewal district and plan, then we would be foregoing those taxes as you summarized. So thank you very much. So my question on the information presented has a lot to do with the comments that Commissioner Rogers shared. I agree with his assessment of what's gone into the planning for this area. And from my standpoint, it seems to me that if we're going to be successful as a region in having the level of economic development growth to provide jobs for the projected population growth, that we need success with each of the industrial areas in our communities. And I don't see how you have a successful industrial area if you don't have transportation connectivity. Ergo, the Basalt Creek Parkway extension. Now, interestingly, while we were meeting this morning, Mayor Boobinek, who I understand he nor any of the city councillors were able to be here today. But they have asked, they sent an email, he sent an email to me asking, sharing that through a small group briefing on the history of the Southwest Concept and Basalt Creek Planning Areas yesterday, councillors asked if it would be possible to chat with me in a Zoom meeting to hear my thoughts on transportation issues in the area and the proposed bridge. I think by proposed bridge, they mean the Basalt Creek Parkway extension. That's the name of the project. So I've stated my position, but I want to ask Twalton city staff, how do you have a successful southwest and Basalt Creek development area without the Basalt Creek Parkway extension?
Well, thank you for that question, Chair Harrington. So I would approach it from a couple of different angles. So the, this urban renewal area, the transportation is a goal of the area. And I think Jonathan or Elaine listed those out. It's a priority. We also have a number of projects. I think there's three projects that are related to transportation that are also council, Washington County priorities. Urban renewal isn't the only tool that we have. And the urban to create transportation infrastructure projects. I will also say that this is a thirty-year plan and projects can be adjusted as things change. I will say that, and you've both have alluded to this. It is no secret that several members of the Twalton Council are concerned about the environmental impacts of the extension and are very sensitive to the issue of creating environmental damage to this pristine canyon solely to serve growth and development. We are having ongoing discussions. We had one yesterday. All, we've been having ongoing discussions with the council about the history of development of the, just the planning efforts in this region and how significant it is for the region and how important transportation infrastructure is to support that. And we've been very clear with the council and they've had a lot of questions about, about, about all of this, but including a sensitivity to the environmental impacts. And it's a tricky policy balancing act that our council is wrestling with, but we do understand the significance of transportation investments and transportation infrastructure to support the economic development of this, of this area, no question.
So you know, I support having a good environment. But that doesn't mean that every road project is a bad project just because it's building something. It's not either or, yes, no. It's a matter of how do we go about building these projects? And do so as environmentally sound as we can. And I'm, but I don't think that the city council of Twalton has set that this discussion up for that. As I have learned more during my only two and a half years on this commission about the Basalt Creek Parkway extension, I'm very aware of the efforts that our land use and transportation team and their hired consultants to do good work are doing to try and make sure we move forward with as environmentally sound a project as possible. Would you agree with that, Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, thank you. I would. Just a couple of comments. And again, I feel badly because Cheryl and Jonathan and Elaine have nothing to do with political ramifications. They're just looking at the funding, but the EIS initial work was done a long time. Well, this argument was handled ten years ago, fifteen years ago, and we all knew what was going on. That's why Wilsonville said, we'll take the entire boundary. Let's take the boundary just a little bit to the north of Basalt and we'll deal with those environmental issues. Lou and I was on Lou's side. Let's take it a little bit south. So but it's on the border. That's what our, our problem really is here. Wilsonville, and I'm sorry I messed up the number, but I remember them saying, well, we think we can ask for twenty-five million. I think that was some ask that Tim was going to ask for. But they're confident that they will take and address the issues appropriately. I think the bigger thing really is, if we all want to be honest about it, is as building goes in, and I saw it when I was mayor down there with everybody wanted to get rid of the Culvert Factory that had been there for a hundred years and they built around it and said, we don't like the noise. Well, people are building around projected a highway. But Metro was very good at making certain that there was substantial amounts of land. They knew what it was going to take. They asked us to look at that at a more micro level because they're more macro. And so this isn't new. It's just new faces. And so, again, I wouldn't ask for a lot. I would just say have an acknowledgement that your council recognizes this is an important project. So that JPAC can continue to allocate dollars, that the planning money can go forward, that everybody is in the game. If we're going to stop, then respectfully, and I say this with all respect, we shouldn't have been putting those monies into that hundred and twenty-fourth because it was going nowhere. We shouldn't have done all that Boons Ferry work because we knew that was happening. So we've spent a lot of money based upon a plan. Unfortunately, as I know now, bypassing Twalton through Norwood never happened if we had done that forty years ago. We wouldn't be talking probably. But it takes a long time to cobble money together. And just because we don't have it completely finished doesn't mean that we had a bad project. We just haven't got the money yet. And so now we're kind of having a stall. So Cheryl, this is directly to you. I know you're in a difficult position. I agree. You're in a terrible position. But I think if your council would simply come to understand that you got to honor commitments because we put too much money, we're too far down the line. And this shouldn't be the bridge to nowhere, or we're all going to be criticized a lot. And I think we can be environmentally sensitive. We knew that, that was they're calling a pristine gully, which if any of you go out there, you'll see a gully. It could be dressed. We knew that. And I still think we can. The bigger issue for, you know, for Wilsonville, they want to fly across I five and open up land out Stafford. So a whole bunch of more issues with this than just getting over to Boons Ferry. But I'll stop. That's why I'm concerned. I just think we need to have an understanding.
Well, I totally share your concern, Commissioner Rogers. And you know, I identify with, you know, having to honor the prior commitments. I was asked repeatedly during my twenty eighteen campaign to serve as chair, what I thought of the event center. And I made it clear that the prior board had committed to build the event center. And I see my job not as questioning why we have an event center, but rather saying, we have an event center. What do I need to do to ensure that we are successful with that event center as it exists? So there is, I learned that principle in my first chapter of being an elected official as a metro councillor, that you have to honor the commitments that have been made prior to your term and move forward from there. Commissioner Rogers, I want to, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but rather I want to appreciate what you're suggesting. I think you're suggesting that before this Board of Commissioners makes an approval of this urban renewal plan or approving it on the seventeenth, that we get a letter of or approving it on the 17th, that we get a letter of commitment from the Tuolleton City Council that they are committed to furthering the transportation funding for the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension project. But those are my words. But I see you just gave a thumbs up. So that is, am I, I'm correctly understanding what you're suggesting?
I certainly would say that you and Cheryl and most staff could come up with something towards it. But yeah, some, some commitment that we know. Can I, GVA just minute? And Chris, tell us about the metro funding that's going to disappear if we don't keep these commitments.
Stephen, do you want to take that?
Yeah, yeah. I'll just say, we're, we are, we are working to redistribute some of the federal funding that we received for the project from a right-of-way phase into the project development phase. The project engineering and development costs during the environmental analysis is costing more than we had anticipated initially. So we're simply trying to reallocate some of our existing federal funding. Part of our challenge in doing that is that we're being asked to develop a credible funding strategy for how the project eventually gets delivered and constructed. So we have a number of opportunities that we have and will continue to pursue for external funding. You know, we understand that there, there will be probably a need for some additional local funding as well. And so, you know, we certainly welcome opportunities to work with the cities of Wilsonville, Tuolleton, potentially Sherwood as well. I think everybody sees that, you know, there's a benefit in, in having this connection made to try to develop a, a funding strategy for the project. And so I think that's, that's sort of where we're probably needing, needing the assistance would be certainly helps developing a funding strategy and, and/or some potential financial commitments would be great.
Yeah, just to say the, the federal rules have changed a bit and there are more deadlines for when we have to expend this money. And we need to demonstrate a, a, a funding strategy. Now, this project has gone on for a long time.
Other commissioners? Well, actually, what the question for you other commissioners is, do you want to move forward with the current plan and for approval on August 17th? As is, or to make the request to the city as summarized? Because I got to tell you, if you want to proceed, you might end up with Commissioner Rogers and I not able to support it.
I was just going to say, sorry, Commissioner Treese, to just cut in. Chair, I was going to say I support what Commissioner Rogers is requesting to come back with a plan for commitment.
Commissioner Treese, is it possible to stay on schedule and still have that plan? In other words, can we stay on the August 17th schedule, but get that information back? And I guess I'm, I'm asking that of Cheryl.
I believe so. So we have a council meeting on August 9th, so next Monday where we'll be talking about this. And I, so we have time between now and when it shows back up in front of your commission.
And that, in essence, that's the purpose of this meeting on, on the 3rd, was to come up with these issues and ask for feedback. So it's an iterative process. I, I would, that's what I would like to have happen.
And if it doesn't happen by the 17th, I do know that the board has, this board has a meeting on August 24th. So if it takes the city longer to get such a letter of commitment or something written as a commitment towards the transportation funding and these goals so that the city is a, a partner and not just, oh, you guys go ahead and figure it out. I mean, the city's going to have to commit to participating. Then it just has a ripple effect on their schedule. So Commissioner Willie, you're the last one.
Well, I guess I'm a little puzzled that this is pretty much all new information to me. I'm usually, as I've said, a, a big fan of urban renewal and and basically allow the cities to chart their own course. And they have done that. They've put together a plan. And my sense is that we are now putting a little bit of a caveat in there and saying, yes, but. And you go back to the city council and from what I was hearing, the city council is not real enamored with the extension of Basalt Creek Parkway for a variety of reasons. And yet we're asking them to make a commitment to that with a week to basically come to that resolution. So I understand the need for meeting deadlines and those kinds of things. But I guess, you know, there's way too much information here for me to process and say, yes, go forth and put the mandate on the Tuolleton City Council. But at the same time, it may be a, a good plan. So a conversation should, should follow here. I'm quite frankly, I'm feeling very left out of the process. And I don't know what I think about that. So I guess that's a neutral.
Yep, let me correct a couple of things. This is the first time I've gotten a briefing on this urban renewal district as well. But the current city council has been resisting the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension project the whole time that I've been on this commission. And so this isn't some, we're not, I don't agree with the, your summary statement that we are adding something new all of a sudden. No, this isn't all a sudden. The, the city council, while I've been on this commission, has been resisting the project. And I continue to ask, well, how can development of that area succeed without connectivity in that area? And nonetheless, the, the resistance continues to hold. And so now the city council is asking us to forego that increased property tax value so that they can proceed on the projects that they are comfortable with. Now, I, I agree with you on urban renewal. This is a tool for the municipalities to use. And I appreciate that they looked at a much larger list of projects, but had to fit projects into the proposal that fit that maximum indebtedness. But as you've heard from Commissioner Rogers and myself and Commissioner Phi, we're not comfortable at this juncture in, in approving the participation of the county in their urban renewal plan without them getting on board with a financial credible funding strategy for the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension. And so the, the patience has run out. The, the expiration timer has gone ding. And now it's like, you know, it, it's time to do something and, and for them to make that commitment.
One final comment. Jerry, I, I, I respect what you're saying. I've always been a big fan of urban renewal too and continue to be. And I think Tuolleton is doing a terrific job. We had agreement. That was the issue. We had agreement when we moved the lines. Metro was a part of that. I shouldn't just say it was the two mayors and I. We had Metro representatives in those, in those meetings. Everybody agreed. That's how we established the boundary. Everybody agreed that there will be financial commitments to, to that project. Everyone agreed to the necessity. But the people have changed. And it's much like entering into a contract where you say, well, that was yesterday's board. Today's board, we don't want to enter into that contract anymore. I looked at this urban renewal. I think it's a wonderful plan. I like it. Other than I saw no commitment, not one red dollar to the Basalt Creek. Even $50,000, that would say we're, we're doing some planning. We're willing to match our, our sister city, Wilsonville, and nothing. And then I'm hearing at least from some of their council members, they no longer support it. Had we not put in, you know, the, was Cheryl going to tell me better, but we probably put in between us and them 100 million bucks on that 124th and all the improvements. I wouldn't be so concerned. We, we gassed up the car. We took it forward. We built all the infrastructure. Now we're at the final little piece and we're saying, well, we don't know if we want to build that. It's just really late in the game to, to be doing that. So anyway, I, I appreciate and respect, you know, where you're at. It, it's just very difficult to do this at this 11th hour. So, so that's where I'm at.
Well, I guess philosophically, Chair, I, and Roy, I, I, I don't disagree with the analogy of we can't, we're going to build an industrial area, but you can't get there from here. And so I completely agree with that. I think my concern again, and using your words, they've been resisting this for a very long time. And here we are now saying, okay, you got a week, figure it out because you don't get past go. You don't get our stamp of approval past go until you do that. What's the reality of that, Cheryl?
Well, like I mentioned, we have been having conversations with the, with the council about all of this. And it is not the entire council that, there, there are concerns, but I, I feel optimistic that we can, I mean, taking your feedback and going back to the council and having a conversation next week about can we have a public acknowledgement that this is an important project? And we will support and commit to funding, to funding it, to, I, I think that I can have that conversation. And I believe that I feel optimistic that there could be a majority of council that will, that will get behind that and support it. And I appreciate your feedback and your concerns. Absolutely. A commitment is a commitment. And I will, I guess I will also say that the extension drops onto Boones Ferry. And it, it, it's not a direct connection to I-5. And there, it's not, it's not a magic bullet. It won't solve all of the traffic issues that exist now or are coming. It is a piece of the puzzle and it's an important piece of the puzzle. So I, I don't disagree with anything that you've said about this. I think the council is looking at it, at the project of, well, you build it. There's environmental concerns that we, we will work through. And then it drops it onto Boones Ferry, drops the traffic onto Boones Ferry that backs up to the high school and past elementary school. And so I, I think they're struggling with just the, the piecemeal nature of it and that this is an important component. But it doesn't solve all the problems. So I, I, again, I, I can take it to council and have the conversation. And we have been having the conversation. And I, I feel optimistic that we can provide a letter, a public letter that meets the requests that you've just articulated. And in time for your, before it appears before you on the 17th or the 17th.
So folks, we have another time-certain outside speaker that was expecting us at 1:45. So I think we've given some pretty clear guidance to our city of Tuolleton staff and their consultants. And we need to move on. So we'll remain hopeful that we'll hear back from you, Ms. Lombos, and, you know, and go from there. So we'll hear back from you, maybe, well, before our August 17th meeting, but hopefully before the packet is published for that meeting. I know I'll be out of town for a business meeting. Oh, it's not till after that. So, okay. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Commissioner Rogers for making sure we, we have a good appreciation for the work that's gone into this. I know I, I weighed in as a metro councillor on those commitments as well. We had to take action on them. So we'll move on then to our next agenda item and welcoming Andrew McGuff, the Executive Director of Work Systems, Inc. for a presentation on Work Systems, Inc. and Rapid Retraining Programming. Thank you for your patience, Andrew.
No problem, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you all. I'm just reducing my view a little bit here so I can look at some notes for you. Because I have a tendency to ramble if I don't contain myself. But it's great to see everyone and appreciate the time. So as I said, good afternoon, Chair Harrington, commissioners. My name is Andrew McGough. And I'm the Executive Director of Work Systems, the Portland Metro Workforce Development Board. I'm here today with a couple of my colleagues to provide a quick update on work systems and our activities in Washington County. Dig a little deeper into some programs supported by the county, and thank you very much for that. And then to provide some insight into where we think workforce development is headed. And finally, to answer your questions and hear your perspectives. As the Portland Metro Workforce Development Board, we are designated by the governor in collaboration with the city of Portland, Baltimore and Washington Counties to receive certain pots of federal and state resources to address regional workforce needs. Our role is to coordinate these and other workforce resources to ensure people and businesses get the services and support they need to thrive in the regional economy. Next slide, please.
Andrew?
Yes.
If you have some colleagues who are here to join us today, if you want them to be advanced from attendees to panelists, if you could just let Clerk Moss know their names so he can do that.
Okay, yeah, it's Kelly Haynes and Victoria Lieboff. And I think, I think Mr. Moss knows. But thank you. So we provide staff support to the Workforce Development Board. The board is a unique public-private partnership that focuses exclusively on regional workforce issues. The board is a majority private sector who are appointed by the elected officials on our board. The reigning, remaining positions are defined by federal law and our bylaws. Commissioner Rogers is our elected representative from Washington County. I want to personally thank Commissioner Rogers for his leadership and friendship over these many years. He has done a great job watching out for Washington County, building great relations with his board colleagues, asking tough questions and leading the way. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Highlighted in green are Washington County representatives on our board. We also used to have Commissioner Treese representing the West Side Economic Alliance on our board. I also want to thank Commissioner Treese for her many years of service and her great leadership, support and sage advice. We will miss you on the board, but fortunately, we still know where to find you. So the folks indicated by an asterix on this chart, it might be tough to see. My apologies there. But they represent organizations that serve multiple jurisdictions across the regions, so including Washington County. Needless to say, I think the county is well represented on the Regional Workforce Development Board. Next slide, please. So one of the primary functions of the Board is to produce a regional strategic plan. The plan is approved by the Governor and serves as sort of the North Star for our investments and efforts. These are our four goals which were approved in June of this year. So essentially what they say are, we want to build a better public workforce system, and I'll get into that in a moment. We want to make sure that those most impacted by COVID and other historically marginalized communities are effectively served by that system. And we want to make sure that employers can find the local talent they need to grow and compete. Next slide, please. So in pursuit of our goals, we partner, build and support the regional public workforce system known as WorkSource. WorkSource Oregon is comprised of a variety of agencies and partners and includes resources managed directly by WorkSystems and resources and services, excuse me, managed by other state and local organizations. By working together, we are better able to maximize resources, expand services and improve results. Our job is to make sure the system is coordinated in other resources and partners like community-based organizations and their customers are actively engaged and effectively served by the system. So in Washington County, we have two centers. Beaverton Hillsborough, which is located on the PCC Willow Creek site. And now a facility in Tiger. We just moved there from Tualatin during the pandemic, unfortunately, but it's set to open and it's a beautiful site. So collectively, these centers and aligned community-based partners serve more than twelve thousand Washington County residents and placed almost eight thousand into local jobs. Now, just as a caveat, this, this data is RPY twenty nineteen. So it doesn't really reflect what happened in twenty twenty because that's sort of a throwaway period, as you all know. As, anyway, these are pre-pandemic, so I just want you to know that. But the other thing I think that's important to take into consideration, we're talking about serving twelve thousand people in frankly, the best economy we had seen in a generation just before the pandemic struck. Next slide, please. Thank you. So by working together, we're able to braid available resources and build a better experience for both job seekers and employers. Last year, which is July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, we contracted just under four point three million dollars in federal, state and local resources to serve Washington County residents through a wide variety of partners. This four point three million dollars further leveraged the millions of other federal and state resources that are invested through the Washington County WorkSource system. So now that you have the bigger picture perspective, I'm going to hand it over to Kelly Haynes, who's going to get a little bit more granular and talk about a grant provided by the county to help expand access to construction careers in Washington Counties. So next slide, and Kelly Haynes, take it away.
Thank you, and thank you all for having us here today. Like Andrew said, I'm going to spend a few minutes covering the grant goals, activities and outcomes to date. And I'll just introduce myself. I'm Kelly Haynes, Senior Project Manager at Work Systems. So first, Washington County Commission approved funding in January of twenty twenty to develop and expand services for Washington County residents, specifically focusing on high-quality careers in the construction industry. The primary goals of the investment were to add, address labor shortages in construction as seen throughout the region for both public and private projects, to help increase diversity in the trades and to provide opportunity to underserved youth in the region. You may all recall what transpired shortly after January of twenty twenty, which was the COVID nineteen pandemic. Given the rapid shifts in what Washington County residents needed due to the pandemic, Work Systems was able to work with Washington County staff to shift the focus of the grant to be responsive to the changing situation for job seekers. And this included activities like staffing a Washington County COVID response line at twenty hours per week with bilingual staff. The response line received five to ten calls per day from May to June of twenty twenty and was intended to connect county residents with workforce services, safety net resources and unemployment insurance guidance and support. The grant was also extended until September of twenty twenty-one to enable a runway of stabilization services before job seekers were ready to enter training and also an acknowledgement that in-person training would be delayed due to COVID risks and restrictions. Next slide. So in addition to the activities and the participant outcomes of the grant to date, which I will cover in the next slide, Work Systems was able, was also able to apply our SNAP fifty fifty program to these funds, which generates a fifty percent match for all SNAP recipients served. These funds grow year over year, and to date, Work Systems has leveraged roughly an additional hundred and three thousand dollars to support additional training, support services and construction focus in the WorkSource centers. Next slide. So what are the activities and services being provided through this grant? Our direct service provider partners include PCC, Portland Youth Builders, Beaverton School District, Community Action and ERCO. The services include construction info sessions where job seekers learn more about what a career in the trades would entail and are connected with training scholarship opportunities, state-certified pre-apprenticeship training, career coaching, rent assistance and other wraparound support services. With Beaverton School District, the COVID restrictions have been a challenge to get a middle school camp up and going. But they have connected with Grolls Build, which is a local nonprofit that really serves that population and are planning a back-to-school week, week-long program with students this September, which will serve at least fifty students and also help engage middle school students to get connected to their new high school construction magnet program out of Merlot High School, which also launched right when the pandemic hit. So it's a brand-new facility, and so we're hoping to use this grant to connect people to that high school program. The grant will be completed by September thirtieth, and so the numbers will change by then. But to date, this grant has served two hundred and twenty-four individuals, eighty-four percent of whom are women and people of color of the construction training students. There has already been an eighty percent placement rate into career track employment and registered apprenticeship. Next slide. So one of our key partners we want to highlight is Portland Youth Builders, who's long been interested in expanding their program into Washington County. Before this, Washington County had no bricks and mortar geographically located pre-apprenticeship programs for its residents to access. But through this grant, Portland Youth Builders has been able to train nearly thirty people, is also recruiting for their summer class and is now able to be responsive to the extensive waitlist that they have consistently had when conducting outreach in the county. There is incredible demand for these trainings, and this investment is a critical step to creating meaningful career pathways into construction. So I'm now going to turn it over to Victoria to talk a bit about the economic opportunity or the EOP program. Thanks.
Could I ask a question, though, before we move to another program? Ms. Angie, didn't we fund through our current fiscal year budget a continuation of that program?
Correct. The Board allocated five hundred thousand, and that is ongoing funds.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I was reporting on this first investment, but there is a continuation. Thank you.
And we are very excited about it because the work started and shows a lot of demand and interest in the Washington County community residents. So I have pleasure to, next slide, please. Thank you. A pleasure talking about two of our well-established partners in the WorkSource Local Workforce Development System in Washington County. Both organizations, Portland Community College and ERCO, have deep connections in the community in general in Washington County and specifically with aligned partner network agencies. This partnership in two words represents the WorkSource on one hand and community-based and public organization that join efforts to support residents in both McNoma and Washington County. Both organizations have the expertise and resources, as Andrew and Kelly mentioned before, to provide an economic opportunity program in Washington County, which is a brand-new Washington County well-established system of providers, a network of providers in McNoma County. So I want to just briefly explain what the EOP Economic Opportunity Program is all about. The program provides long-term career coaching services for low-income, COVID-impacted, SNAP-eligible Washington County residents who have multiple barriers to employment. And the barriers would include the housing, the transportation, language abilities, health issues and many others. Services for EOP include proactive, ongoing engagement with participants such as career exploration and work readiness activities, life and self-skill development, referrals to occupational training, job search assistance and employment placements. Enrolled participants usually start with strengths-based career mapping workshop that includes assessment of their employment interest, aptitude, barriers to future employment and of course, the resources to overcome these barriers. Jointly with the career coach, each participant after the career mapping workshop develops a career and resource plan to guide them on that journey to reach self-sufficiency. When participants go include occupational trainings, EOP coaches assist them with referrals, enrollments and various supports through the training to ensure that they successfully complete the training and take for employment in selected industries. In addition to intensive, long-term, I just want to focus and emphasize that this is a long-term relationship-based coaching. So in addition to this intensive coaching, EOP participants are receiving support needed to help stabilize their life situation, especially in a COVID environment, and succeed on the pathway to career track employment with living wage. Support services included rent assistance to prevent eviction and homelessness, utility payments, basic household needs coverage, transportation and many others. These support services, up to date, were supported by the Sierra Grant. Twenty thousand dollars went to rent assistance and utility payment and debts by Oregon Health Authority Household Assistance Grant that provided each participant in need with a cash card, with a thousand, one thousand dollar cash card and other leverage resources. I also want to highlight that one of the Washington County Partners, a community action organization, is our Housing Hub in Washington County. And it coordinates all-in rent assistance for the participants of economic opportunity programming, allowing them to focus on reaching their employment need. So up to date, as of today, twenty-two Washington County residents are enrolled in the EOP programming. Nine of them after career mapping, attending Portland Community College Career Exploration Workshop and On-Ramp Construction Course with the college decided to choose the construction industry as their pathway. They are on the way to be able to enter the pre-apprenticeship or apprenticeship, getting stabilized, building their, ready for this path. I'm happy to let you know that out of this twenty-two, ten participants are already employed. It's an average wage of twenty-one dollars seventy-five cents. This is pretty good at the beginning. And one unique service that is of EOP is twelve months retention. When participants get employed, they still supported by the coach for another twelve months. And that allows them to, you know, be stable on employment and have the advancement opportunity, wage, hours, benefits. So as I said before, long-term supported program for vulnerable individuals. I am also happy to see, because the grant continues and support continues, that ERCO is bringing to the program a number of Washington County immigrant and refugee residents. As Andrew mentioned before, because this program is for SNAP-eligible participants, it also generates the investment on our fifty-fifty SNAP grant, and it definitely is helping and will continue to help to sustain the program and build on it for the future role. I guess that's it.
Thanks, Victoria. Next slide, and I promise we're going to finish up here and then question away. I'm not going to read. I'm just going to talk to you about these things because I think this is of interest. So what's next for workforce development? Part of the challenge that we faced during the pandemic and just over the recent year, year and a half, is that there has been no direct investment in workforce development programming, traditional workforce development programming, either through the CARES Act or through the Rescue Plan. So we've managed to sort of cobble some stuff together. But something that we anticipate is that come September, when folks, you know, sort of return to work, kids are back in school and the extended unemployment insurance benefits expire in the first week of September, we anticipate that there's going to be an influx of people coming to the public workforce system. And the challenge will be, how do we effectively serve them, given the fact that we have double the unemployment rate of pre-pandemic, but less resources to serve those people? So that's really sort of the challenge we keep an eye on, is what's going to happen this fall. But we have some good news to report. So we got word last week on a request that Kelly and I worked on with some of our pre-apprenticeship providers. Congresswoman Bonamichi approached us and said earmarks are back. They call them something different, but they're in all extents purposes earmarks. And she said, you guys have a proposal that you'd like us to consider. And we developed a proposal, and lo and behold, it passed out of the House last week and is now sitting in the Senate. People are pretty optimistic that it will pass easily out of the Senate. The real challenge was getting it out of the House. And that proposal directly builds upon the county's investment to expand access to construction trades, particularly for low-income communities of color and women in Washington County. And so that will be a million-dollar grant, which we will focus on expanding those services and bringing more capacity to Washington County to meet the demand that Kelly said PYB is already experiencing. So we're excited about that. Another thing that, you know, is in the works, we've heard a lot about infrastructure. And regardless of the bill you think about, there is going to be a lot of workforce implications. So this notion of training people in the building trades, this new infrastructure bill, because we are going to be challenged on the talent side to fill those, those needs. So we're doing the right things. We're building that capacity. We're getting ready for this infrastructure bill, and there will likely be some additional resources in there to train up more people. So we're excited about that. At the state level, we were successful this year, and I want to give a shout out to Aaron Doyle and to the rest of the Washington County Government Relations Team. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for making those connections for us. But for the first time after many years of trying, the state is going to make an investment in youth employment and specifically youth employment services for low-income young people. And that was a nine million dollar general fund investment. And when all is said and done, I anticipate about a million dollars will come to serve young people in Washington County between the ages of fourteen and sixteen years old. Details are still being worked out, but good news. The other thing with the state, the state's trying to figure out what to do with their remaining ARPA resources. We'd love to work with the county to get in line and talk about if you want to make an investment in workforce. if you want to make an investment in workforce development, here's some things that we think would make a difference for the county, would make a difference for the region, and we can work together and leverage some of this stuff. On the regional level, we've worked with our economic development partners on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that just passed, I think, last week. And it really is the blueprint to allow us to pursue resources through the Economic Development Administration. And they actually issued a grant request that is due in January for about five hundred million dollars, and we believe we're gonna be very well-positioned as a region to pursue one of those grants, in part because part of our responsibility under the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is to look into building more quality in regional jobs. And this is really an initiative that looks at, how do we improve the workplace for frontline workers particularly, to make it more accessible, more effective, and give them opportunities for career advancement, better wages, benefits, and the like, but at the same time, working with employers to develop tools that demonstrate that those kinds of practices on the front end result in better recruitment, better retention, and better advancement of their employees. So, we're really excited about this initiative. I know Matt Craigie is very interested in this work, and so we're gonna make sure to connect with Matt, as well as other leaders in Washington County to get your perspective on how we move this forward. Finally, I just wanna acknowledge that the city of Portland locally just gave us an ARPA grant for four million dollars, which is focused on earn-and-learn activities and rapid re-careering. And we believe that these are proven activities that work across jurisdictional boundaries, and that as we're thinking about moving towards economic recovery, really trying to address this question about labor shortages, and really trying to move people from poverty to prosperity, how do we do that in a way that allows people to connect to career-track employment and then advance once they're there? So with that, that's my spiel. It's really great to see everybody, and I look forward to any questions that you might have. Thank you so much for your time today.
Commissioners. Questions or comments? Okay, well, seeing none. Whoops, there we go, Commissioner Willie.
Well, I feel like I'm a little bit disadvantaged, so I might be asking some pretty rudimentary questions. So, Andrew, you and I have talked, but it's been a while. And so I probably need to be brought up to speed here. So, if I heard you correctly, I mean, there's been a lot of activity, kind of the Beaverton and Tigard Centers, and it's kind of sounds like central Washington County. Obviously, I represent the West, and honestly, not feeling a lot of the love out here. And so, that's gonna be my focus on any future investments. I'm going to want to know how we can move some of those services more out here. And I think where I'm going with that is that you emphasize the construction industry, education, and those kinds of things. I completely agree, we hear the same things out here. But we're also, you know, we're kind of out here in the West, we're kind of advanced manufacturing folks. And I'd like to see, I guess, some more emphasis on that. And I need you to kind of, and again, this is, I'm gonna admit my ignorance here. So, Portland gave you four million dollars for funding for a certain program. But I know that you don't do that training, so what do you do with that money, and how's that work?
Okay, those are a lot of questions, Commissioner, and I'll try and answer them all. So, in terms of Western Washington County, and I mean, I don't know if you recall the little map that we provided in the part, but we agree with you. I mean, Western Washington County, Southern Washington County, we need to be able to provide services countywide, and we want to make those as accessible as possible. So, part of our strategy has been, yes, we have these, you know, big physical sites that are, you know, primarily funded by state agencies, that primarily, you know, intended for lots of people and moving through there. But what we've found is, when we want to work with communities that have either been disconnected or have had been challenged to access services in the past, really trying to create relationships at the community level is what we found to be very successful. So, if I, I don't know how far west you're talking. If you're talking Hillsborough, like Central Cultural, we do a lot of work with them. We do, we started to do a lot of work with Forest Grove and the foundation out there. And so, trying to build those community-level relationships, and, you know, Victoria talked about career coaching. So, those career coaches are located at those local facilities. So, what they do is they help people understand what's available in the public workforce system, and then work to get them prepared, so that when they're ready to access services that are available there, they're able to do that in an effective way and have that main, that, you know, ongoing local relationship to help them, you know, manage their way through that process. And we also set aside resources for those partners, so that when they get to the center, those resources are prioritized for those customers. So, we're absolutely with you and want to build those kind of community-level relationships, because we believe that's the best way to make those connections. And so, another thing that we've been doing is talking to libraries, because libraries are another great, sort of, you know, wide, community-level resource. And a lot of people go to libraries because they want to look for a job. And the real question is, when they go to a library and they look for a job, what about if they need skill development, or they need training? How do we connect them to that public system? So, we've been having ongoing conversations with libraries to figure out how to make those meaningful connections. The other question, I, so I don't know if I'm ticking all the boxes for you, but we're trying. And, you know, we contracted for years with Hillsborough School District and use them as a mechanism of fan-out. The other question, like, so you're right, we don't deliver direct services. What I was trying to, so, the goal is, is if the county makes an investment through work systems, the idea is that we're connecting all of those other resources, so that there's more resources available to those customers. It's not just a one-off county investment, or a city investment, or, you know, it's a county investment coupled with a federal investment. The other thing you heard from Victoria is workforce development is not just about skills, especially if you want to target people who have been historically marginalized, have had a tough time connecting with the labor market. We need to think about housing, we need to think about childcare, we need to think about income insecurity, and we need to think about skills, and we need to wrap all those things together. And that's really the kind of expertise I think we bring to the table, so you guys don't have to do that. You don't have to go out there and contract with all these other organizations, because that's what our job is, that's the value we bring. And so, like the Bonamici request, we deliberately connected that directly to that county investment, so that now it's growing, there's more dollars to fill those needs. Advanced manufacturing, that was the other question you mentioned. So, we talked a lot about construction today, because that was the direct investment that the county made. But we actually have four targeted industries that we work in a very focused way on. Construction, healthcare, IT, and manufacturing. And because we have, we consider them a target industry, it's because, A, they offer, you know, they have a big impact on the regional economy. B, they offer, they have lots of job opportunities. And C, they have pathways, true pathways, to move people from an entry level to self-sufficient wage. So, we have cultivated on the manufacturing front for years, particularly on the metals, in the, you know, sort of the more industrial side, we've had a lot of success there. Not so much on like the high-tech manufacturing, although we have done a lot of sort of software-related work and some work on A-plus certifications and those kinds of things. But we also know that, you know, these industries get their workforce from the region. They don't get their workforce from Beaverton or from Camas. They take, they need workers from across the broader region. So, we work with Southwest Washington and with Clackamas County to develop regional plans to address those targeted industry sectors. Because then what that means is, we are able to pool the resources that they manage, the expertise that they bring to the table, and so when an employer in Hillsborough has a need for a worker, they're not just gonna draw from Hillsborough, they're gonna draw from the broader regional economy, because that's how it works. So, that's what we're trying to do on the regional front, recognizing that, you know, there's specific company needs, but in the grand scheme of things, our biggest impacts come when we work at, at an industry level, not a company level.
Can I add a couple of things, Andrew, just for Jerry's benefit? We try to get members on the board, I do a lot of pointing, obviously, who represent the county. Deanna Palm is on our board, and you know her well. Carl Moyer is with Par Lumber, by the way, their headquarters in Hillsborough. It's one of the, I think it's the sixteenth-largest in the nation. And you've mentioned the school district. We also work with our friends at Clean Water Services, who are looking at the program, as well as the jail. We have programs, training in the jail, county has hired folks. So, it's a pretty broad program. One of the things is, it's an interesting one, because we don't produce anything, we don't sell anything. We're a coordinator. You know, you get about twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars a year, and it's a multiplier, like when you hear the arts come in, or anybody say, "Well, you give us a dollar, and we can get a four to one, or five to one, or six." That's exactly what work systems is. They cobble together money through their expertise, and they expand programs. So, I'm sorry, Andrew, to interject that, but it's a lot of involvement across the county. It's very impressive, the operation.
So, we're gonna need to move on to other commissioners and then wrap this topic up. Commissioner Phi, Commissioner Trese, anything else? Any questions?
Thank you, Cherry. Yes, a couple small questions. Andrew, good to see you again, great presentation, and nice to meet you, Kelly and Victoria. My question is around, I think shifting gear a little bit, retraining for adults, especially from communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID. You know, folks who are looking to work outside the service industry. What, you know, is there any opportunities available? And then the other question is, what about training people for second jobs? Because I know low-income communities, you know, that side hustle matters, and they often, you know, people would appreciate making extra money. So, if you could just speak into that.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Phi, appreciate the question. So, again, when we look at our targeted industries, we select those in large part because they do offer pathways for people through careers that offer them an opportunity to support themselves and their family. So, you know, construction is a great example. You go in as an apprentice, you're paid, you learn, you earn, and then you advance to journey level. And by the time you get to journey level, you're in a position, really, for the most part, of economic stability for yourself and your family, whatever those circumstances might be. It's the same in healthcare, so we've done a lot of work to try and connect underrepresented, underserved communities to careers in healthcare. And we're not talking about like CNAs as an end game, we're talking about CNAs as an entry to an LPN, as an entry to an RN program. We don't, our goal is economic self-sufficiency. So, we want to, you know, and I think Victoria mentioned this too, in our economic opportunity, the challenge is, is that to move someone from poverty to prosperity, and we don't like to talk about this much, but I will, is, A, it takes a long time, and it costs a lot of money. And it's not just about that first job, it's about landing in a job that you know is, can lead to a next job that puts you in a better position to support yourself and your family. And that's really the kind of intervention and service we're trying to create with the people we're serving. And that's why we work with these industries, because part of the quid pro quo on the industry side needs to be, if we're making investments to train people to your specifications, to get them ready for your industry, not only should you hire them, but you have to help them when you're ready to advance them. So, we're having that kind of candid conversation, which is not, you know, business, to be honest with you, really appreciates that conversation. And I think as, as the labor market continues to present challenges, the opportunity to really have those candid conversations about, it's not just about getting someone in and doing a job, it's how do we get them in? How do we help you retain them? How do we help you advance them? Because it helps your bottom line as an employer. So, we're trying to do that, Commissioner Phi. I don't know if that's explicitly answering your question, but I think that's part of the targeted industry strategy. And then, in terms of a second job, we have been primarily focused on finding a career for people and putting them on a career track. So, I don't know that we've done a lot of investing in second jobs, but certainly, the public workforce system has a lot of available jobs. And if that were someone's goal, the system should be able to make that connection for them, although that's not a place we have spent a lot of our time, because we want people to get into a career that allows that career to support them and meet their needs that way.
Thank you, Andrew. I think, yeah, I will just follow up and say, how does Washington County get the equity data from your efforts around race and ethnicity?
You can do that.
And I turn the chair to you, Chair, after this.
Kelly, you want to respond to that?
Oh, yeah, we can definitely send that to you, Commissioner, so thank you for asking. We do track by racial category and gender every individual that we serve. So, I also will just offer, at least on the construction track, generally, the pre-apprenticeship programs, they're all approved by the Bureau of Labor and Industries. And our vetting process in our procurement also includes a demonstrated history of serving women and people of color. So, not just being fully certified, but also like, have you had success in placing women and people of color into the trades? Because there's a huge need to diversify the trades, and there are incredible jobs and careers for people. And then, a lot of them have, and they're about nine to twelve weeks, most of them are starting to provide a stipend for people while they're in training, understanding that there is a need to, like, feed your family while you're in training. And then they have direct entry into registered apprenticeship programs. So, ideally, you know, we really want to partner with a tangible training track, so that people aren't going to a training and then not having a clear direction to the next step to earning a paycheck and being on that career pathway. And then, an apprenticeship, like Andrew said, you're earning money. You usually start at about twenty dollars an hour with a pension, with healthcare, and you journey out within three to five years, depending on the trade. So, that is really, I appreciate your questions, because I think that's important for a lot of households in poverty to know that it's a worthwhile venture to go into these types of trainings and actually end with a career placement and a pathway forward.
Thank you so much. I think I meant to also say, I think you corrected and added gender and age was the other thing. I'm done, Chair Harrington.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
I just want to say thank you to Andrew and Kelly and Victoria, appreciate it. The one thing that I would encourage, and maybe this is to, is focus as much on Commissioner Willie, is how the evaluation of how the program's doing, the metrics, that, you know, how do we tell our story after we've spent the money? I think is an important piece to bring back to the commission, and maybe even to individual commissioners. And it is, I think, it's also hard to kind of get your head around, as, you know, as someone who's authorized- you know, as someone who's authorizing the money. What do, it, it sounds like you get all this money, but the reality is you take lots of that money and provide it over here for the actual action that occurs. And how is that evaluation coming back to you? So just, you know, almost a flow chart type of approach to what, um, what the services are and how they, how, how, how we evaluate them. Does that make sense? Chair, you look like you're not in agreement there.
No, sorry, I jumped over to look at email to see what time it was. Okay. Reacted to an email, my apologies.
No, no problem. I, I just, and, and what I'm trying to do, Andrew, is talk about how do we best tell our stor- I see, I'm still using the our word. Maybe how do you best tell yours, your story in relationship to, uh, how the system functions out, works? So, so I don't, I don't know if that's helpful or not. And Commissioner Willie, I'm not sure if that would help you.
Good suggestions and, 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 you know, we are basically out of time on this, so I want to defer back to the chair. But I look forward to further communication, Andrew. Uh, and, you know, educating the, the low end of the food chain here, so you can help me out, I know.
Well, do, Commissioner.
Thank you again. I appreciate the presentation. It's great and, um, you have my support.
So, thank you, Mr. McGuff and Kelly Haynes and Ms. Ibov. Have I pronounced your last name correct, Victoria? Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. I think what you're hearing is appreciation from all commissioners for the work of Work Systems and support for it. But we each find ourselves at a different place informationally. Uh, certainly Commissioner Rogers, having been on the Work Systems Inc. Board for a number of years, has continuous reinforcement of what you do and how you do it. And through partners and value, Commissioner Trese, through her past, uh, service at Westside Economic Alliance, has, I assume, had the same benefit of that. Uh, but there are three of us who have not. And so we're trying to sort through where do we have, uh, information needs. So I do want to start with, uh, thank you, Mr. McGuff, uh, for providing me with an opportunity, uh, to serve on the Quality Jobs Council. That invitation went through my staff and then I was away and I received it on, uh, from your staff on July 15th with a request to get back to you the 23rd of July. And I didn't do so. So I am, am embarrassed that I didn't see that in time. Uh, that would have been a great opportunity to participate. And I assume I blew the deadline, so, uh.
You're always welcome, Chair.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't kicked it off. If, uh, so I, I can, I can talk to you later about it if you'd like.
Okay, I would have, I would like to participate. Um, so I'll, I'll reconnect offline. Then the other is, there was reference to the Regional Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS. So, uh, I assume because of their work, work WSI Board of Directors, that both Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Trese have had a presentation on that. And, uh, Commissioner Willie is on the GPI Board of Directors. So he should have had the opportunity of that, I assume already. But Commissioner Phi and I have not. Uh, so I won't, uh, suggest that, uh, that come to the Board of Commissioners in Works this work session, uh, because it might be too redundant for three of our members. But Ms. Angie, I think, uh, Commissioner Phi and I each need a, uh, briefing on that. And if that could be arranged through staff, I think that would be very helpful. Lastly, uh, beyond the thank yous, you've been a great partner. Uh, you certainly helped us invest money from the Coronavirus Relief Fund of the CARES Act. And all of us on the board are trying to look at how do we invest the dollars through the two tranches of the American Rescue Plan Act? So that we as the board know that we are making investments in the community economic recovery. We know you're an awesome partner and that you leverage even more dollars. So I think that's what, where we're coming from. We're struggling with how do we make sure that we as a board have a good base of knowledge so that we can, uh, do our work and saying, let's invest X amount of millions through WSI to help our community. Um, and towards that end, we've been getting briefings from our staff, given our own county needs for supporting, uh, behavioral health. Here in Washington County, we now have a project, the Center for Addiction Treatment and Triage, which will add to that behavioral health workforce crisis. Whoo. So I think that's a sector where I know you have healthcare and the CRF report, uh, highlighted the rapid retraining that you provided in healthcare. But I think that subsector of healthcare, uh, is one where we're really going to need your help. Um, so I see that as a, an area where we've already heard the, the bell of alarm from our own staff on that sector where, where we're going to need to, uh, come back to you and say, what can we do? What can we invest in that will make a difference? Not only for the workforce members of our community, for their career pathways, but also for our system of care through our service suite as a county. So I'll leave that to you to help us figure out over the next few months, uh, as well. So, uh, I know I have to follow up with you, Andrew, in a timely manner. And I will do so. Thank you so much to the three of you for coming today, for presenting to us and for the excellent work that you do to help everyone in our community thrive through good career pathways. Take good care.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Uh, so commissioners, I know we still have several topics. Um, I know we're going to, uh, lose, uh, Commissioner Rogers for a little while at three o'clock, but I'm mindful of the time and our human needs. We've been going since 12:30. I think we need a break, uh, before we pick back up, uh, and look at, um, Ms. Angie, you can help us, a topic three, topic six, and topic seven. So, um, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Well, um, it, Tonya, do you think it will be done at five o'clock? By then, okay, I just have a, a hard stop then. So I just wanted to make sure. I, I thought so too. Just, just asking.
Two quick things for me. I, I, yes, I need to, uh, go off at three and I'll come back on. Chair, do you want to reschedule our four o'clock then for tomorrow at four? Tomorrow at four, or do you want to look? Get back to me.
I don't, yeah, definitely.
Okay, we'll reschedule, we'll do it when you reschedule. Thank you.
Uh, so what I was going to suggest was we either problem solve with Ms. Angie right now and then take a break? Or we just take a break that'll give Ms. Angie some time to sort through which of these topics we'll be able to work through. And I want to acknowledge that I saw Commissioner Willie holding up four fingers. So I guess he committed himself to something else at four o'clock. No, you did not. Good job.
And no, I'm just saying it's, uh, according to the agenda, it's 55 minutes. So we should be done by four o'clock. If we take a 15 minute break and we get it done efficiently, we should be done at four. So, but no, I, I always leave these days wide open. I never know what's going to come.
Ms. Angie, would you like to have some time to problem solve versus being on the spot?
Um, no, happy to be on the spot. If we take a 15 minute break, we would come back and address. I would recommend the order being I, item three, um, then six, and then seven. And staff are in queue waiting for that order.
Okay, so we'll reconvene at 3:10. Okay? And we'll see you back here when you can, Commissioner Rogers. Thank you.
Commissioner, hi. Commissioner Willie, are you back with us?
I was just gonna say that my dog got a break, but I'm not sure I did.
Yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Fire, are you back with us?
Well, a quorum is three. Should we just get going and go from there? Okay. So we'll pick back up with topic number three. I'm not sure who to turn it over to, so I'll just.
Afternoon Chair Harrington, it's Marnie Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services, and we are turning it over to um Tom Eggleston, who I believe is on, but I can't see him.
Good afternoon Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. Um, thank you for the time this afternoon. We are here to give you an update on um expanded recycling services discussion and a exemption request from Ridwell Inc. Next slide, please. All right, thank you. So overview of the issue here, we have Washington County Code, Chapter eight point zero four, uh which regulates solid waste collection in unincorporated Washington County. Um eight point zero four states that it is unlawful for any person to store, transport, collect, or dispose of any waste or solid waste in unincorporated areas of the county for compensation unless he first obtains a certificate issued by the board. Um Ridwell Inc. is a company that we became aware of, uh that is operating in a collection service for hard-to-recycle materials for compensation in unincorporated Washington County in early um spring, uh late winter this year. Uh following notice of violation that was sent to Ridwell, um Ridwell has requested and consideration of an exemption request pursuant to Washington County Code eight point zero four one thirty C. Um I have that language in a subsequent slide. Um in the meantime, during throughout that process, the um certificated garbage haulers that do provide um solid waste collection services through our franchised system in Washington County have also provided a proposal to offer similar hard-to-recycle material collection services as part of their certificates. Next slide, please. This is gives you a timeline of the um conversation so far. On February eighth, county staff received a complaint regarding Ridwell operating in unincorporated Washington County. Um staff followed up and investigated the complaint uh February and March. Uh met with Ridwell to try to understand what they were services they're providing, um how they thought they were providing them outside of the certificate system, informing them of the rules and regs, coordinating with council and state regulators to ensure we were on the right page about the definitions of materials and the types of um materials being collected. March thirty first, staff sent a noter, a letter notifying Ridwell of the non-compliance of and some options that were um played out in Washington County Code for them to potentially seek approval to provide the service they are providing. On April sixteenth, the Washington County Hauler Association sent a proposal to staff for an expanded recycling services program. Um staff received that proposal and are very interested in working through and and discussing that with the haulers. However, feel we need to resolve the exemption request issue before we can move forward that discussion. May fourth, uh Ridwell filed a formal request for an exemption through Washington County Code eight point zero four one thirty. Um June tenth, which is part of the process for the formal exemption request, the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee held a public hearing related to that request. On June thirtieth, the the GRAC had a second meeting to further consider the request has not come to final conclusion, and here we are today on August third. Next slide, please. Um the charge and uh for the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee is laid out in Washington County Code, um section eight oh four one thirty C. Explicitly states that certificates shall not be required of other persons' practices, processes, businesses, or wastes exempted by the board after receipt of a recommendation of the advisory committee on the basis of findings made after a public hearing that the same is not necessary to the implementation of the county or a regional solid waste management plan. That has been the question that the GRAC has been trying to answer and has been unable to reach a conclusion at this point. Um the exemption request is really based on this very specific question. And the question posed to the committee is, is this practice of collecting hard-to-recycle materials or wastes necessary to the implementation of a county or regional solid waste management plan? That conversation is still happening with the committee. Next slide, please. Um the GRAC's next planned steps are they have at their meeting on June thirtieth have requested the formation of a subcommittee. That subcommittee consists of three members, one industry representative, the chair of the committee, and a public member. Um those folks will start meeting as this week to explore the issue. They want to review the regional waste plan in more detail to try to understand the regional waste plan better. It's a large document with lots of details. And then they are also interested in in exploring, and if there is an exemption recommendation from their committee, they would like to explore potential conditions that maybe they may be able to recommend that to ensure that no exemption would harm um the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That is the update. Next slide. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. PowerPoint driver.
Oh, Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this point? I, okay, don't see anybody unmuting, and I see two head nose. Uh both for staff and uh legals' knowledge, uh and I don't know. My question isn't. Well, I have a question of based on something in the presentation. So prior to being on the county commission, I was a metro counselor for twelve years. And as such, I did work and had the responsibility to adopt two regional waste plants. Uh and I I can't see how as a county commission member, I'm able to remove that base of knowledge out of my head. So I sit here today fully aware that I am a member of this county Board of Commissioners, and I have to make my decisions based off of our current code. Uh so when we receive uh recommendation with findings from GRAC, it will be interesting for me to try and understand their uh positioning on that regional waste plan. And so I I guess one reason for my mentioning this is because I know our staff uh both in the departments, in both departments, right? Health and Human Services and Legal do their absolute best to staff that advisory committee in addition to us. So I may have to come back and ask you some more questions uh when we have that recommendation from the committee to try and understand what they grappled with in their service to us versus what my level of understanding is on the regional waste plan as I participated in the development of them. And that solid waste, the regional solid waste uh plan, independent of the the, what I'm trying to get at is not the regional waste plan, but the how the system works and considering policies for additional recycling matters uh was very arduous, and I learned a lot about the state of the recycling industry and collections and stockpiling. So that's part of what I'm trying to make sure I I park appropriately and leave in a box as opposed to understand as a commissioner moving ahead. So wasn't so much a question as making sure I reported in that prior experience and that I can't separate that out of my brain. So.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful when we come back.
Yeah, and the regional waste plan is a complex document, as you as you well know, Chair Harrington, it's a hundred and fifty-seven pages, I think, and so that the advisory committee is is has not spent a lot of time studying the plan itself, but this will also be a good exercise for our um advisory committee and your board's advisory committee to really dig into that waste plan and not just for this topic, but for future topics as they continue to advise us and you on on solid waste matters that come before you. So I think it's going to be a valuable exercise, and I look forward to working with them to to navigate that question.
And I think Teresa would would tell you and I both that the current one is much smaller than the prior one that we adopted in my first term as a metro counselor, because that one was very prescriptive and had all kinds of technical matters in it, and the current one is trying to be much more nimble. I mean, make sure we're clear on policies and goals as a region. Uh but make sure that the implementation is nimble with changes in the industry as well as changes in material. And I think part of what I'm going to need to understand moving forward is I know that there are some state changes on uh the materials management system and whatnot, and that's all mixed up in my head, too.
Yes. Senate Bill five eighty-two is modernizing organs recycling, so it's a big change that the state will start really doing some rulemaking on, and it's going to have a big impact on our system in the next five to six years. So it's something we'll definitely look into.
But aren't I correct that both the GRAC and us as a commission will need to make decisions based off of our existing code and the way the system is set up today versus what might happen in the future? That isn't spec that. Okay. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's it on topic three. So now we'll move to topic six. Enhance Sheriff Patrol District ESPD Sunset Review Draft and District Renewal Briefing with Erin Calvert.
Good afternoon Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, I'm Erin Calvert with the County Administrative Office, and also for the record, Sheriff Garrett is present today. And I know that other members of the Sheriff's Office is present in case questions come up. The purpose of this work session is to provide an enhanced Sheriff Patrol District Renewal Briefing by reviewing the Sunset Review Draft Report. Next slide. Your packet includes the Sunset Review Draft Report, which will review as part of the slide deck, and then we'll have time for questions and next steps. I will lead with and wrap up with this policy question. Does the board wish to direct staff to prepare a district renewal public hearing on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one, which is an evening board meeting? Next slide. So as noted in your in the executive summary section of the report, the district was formed by the Board of County Commissioners in nineteen eighty-seven, and per that resolution and order, the Board of County Commissioners serve as the district's Board of Directors. The district's purpose is to provide law enforcement services to the residents of urban unincorporated Washington County. And per the statute, the district is subject to regular sunset review, and it expires without an explicit order from your board to continue it. Additionally, if the board wishes to continue the district as a legal entity, then it is required to adopt an order calling for its continuation no later than forty-five days after the start of the district's final fiscal year. So in this case, given that the district expires on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, the board would have to adopt findings no later than August fourteenth of twenty twenty-two or proceed to dissolution of the district. Next slide. If the board wishes to continue the district, the statute requires that findings are developed around three fundamental questions. And those questions are, do the services provided continue to be needed by the public? Is the district providing the services in an effective and efficient manner? And will continuation of the district not significantly discourage future boundary proposals? As you can see on the bottom of page two and page three of the Sunset Review, the district has been renewed by the board in nineteen ninety-three, two thousand three, and two thousand thirteen. Additionally, the ESPD local option levy has passed in every year since its inception. In this cycle, both the district as well as the local option levy expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And while we do have some time before is required to renew the district, given the timeline for local option levy planning, we are before your board ahead of the expiration to allow time for planning should the district be renewed. Next slide. This slide is just a visual reminder that all four commissioner districts have a part of the ESPD, those smaller in districts three and four. And the ESPD covers the unincorporated areas listed on the right side of the slide and that are represented in sort of a brown color, at least on my computer, on the map. Next slide. This graphic comes from the Sheriff's Office and has been part of prior board briefing, so it's just a reminder and break. just a reminder and breaks out the corresponding funds to the service level for the urban unincorporated areas, reaching the 1.08 officers per thousand of residents in the district. Next slide. Moving to pages four and five of the sunset report, I'd like to highlight the findings. For finding one, the continued need for ESPD services. Given the growing population of the county and particularly in the urban unincorporated areas, as well as the increasing numbers of calls for service over the past several years, it is believed that there is a continued need for ESPD services. Additionally, the last levy was approved with a 76% voting yes, which demonstrates it is filling an important public need. For finding two, efficient and effective service provision, the district is funded by both a permanent tax rate of approximately 64 cents per thousand of assessed value and a local option levy currently at 68 cents per thousand of assessed value, making a combined rate of $1.32. These services are delivered by the Washington County Sheriff's Office. We know that the sheriff's office maintains a lean staffing model and works to provide a high safety value for the community, and we believe that both efficient and effective service delivery are demonstrated. For finding three, impact of renewal of ESPD on future boundary changes, we do not see the district as a significant hindrance to future boundary change proposals. Cities may look to annex land inside the urban unincorporated area, but we do anticipate the need for district services to continue. And in the event of annexation, the transition from one police provider and taxing district to another is relatively seamless and automatically withdrawn from ESPD. Based on those findings, it is staff recommendation to ask your board to direct staff to proceed with a district renewal and plan for a public hearing on August 24th of 2021. Through a public hearing and resolution and order, we would ask that your board renew the district effective July 1 of 2023 through June 30th of 2033. Next slide. So what questions does the board have on district renewal? And is there a, does the board wish to direct staff to proceed to the next step of a public hearing? And I'll turn it over to you.
So commissioners, that was our briefing. Do you have any questions? Or feedback on these questions?
Speaking from District Two, I this is, this is something obviously that we need to do in my estimation, and I'm ready and willing to support in any capacity needed. So I'm, I want to direct the staff to prepare the district renewal public hearing.
Thank you. So I saw Commissioner Willie's thumbs up, ready to proceed. Commissioner Phi, do you have any questions or feedback on this question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think, could you go back one, a couple of slides back, Erin? There was a question you asked, one more, maybe back. Tried to find my slide, but I wasn't quick enough. One more, I think, maybe. Yeah, so like, do the services provided continue to be needed by the public? Like, how do we answer that question before we sign off?
That's a good, a great question, Commissioner Phi. Part of what we, I looked at with the sheriff's office, and I know Sheriff Garrett is present if he wants to jump in. Part of it was really around, what is the current use? And sometimes that's hard to separate the countywide data to the, direct to the ESPD, to the district. But I know that the population has increased and that the calls for service have increased. And so we looked at that data, as, as well as I mentioned, that the, the voters overwhelmingly support the levy cycle each time it comes before the voters. And I don't know if Sheriff Garrett has anything to add.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. Commissioner Phi, thank you for the question. You know, what comes to mind first is that through the contract, right, that the sheriff's office has with the, with a board to provide services, we are the law enforcement provider for that, for that district, for the community. So, so, right, I mean, that, that's, that's how public safety gets accomplished in the, in the district is through, through the ESPD, through, through the service district. And that's, that's a very, very kind of a high level of global response, but I would, I would agree with Deputy County Minister Ed Calvert's response as well. And, and perhaps we could address that in greater detail at a public hearing, should your board decide to move forward.
Yeah, I don't. I'll, I'll just speak for me. And as I'm, I'm wondering if we could have that conversation first before we move forward. I'm just trying to facilitate more discussion. And it sounds like, correct me, Sheriff Garrett, if I'm wrong, we have time. Do we have to rush to the August 24th, or could we actually wait further down?
Can, before you answer that, I just want to make sure that I understand the timeframes the same way that you do and that Commissioner Phi may. So here we are today, August 3rd of 2021. Then you covered an August 14th of 2022 deadline as 45 days after the start of the fiscal year 2022, 2023. So we have to make a decision on the sunsetting before then.
That is correct. And I think the push, I think what's tricky about this, you know, we do this district renewal every 10 years. There's typically, oh, I'm sorry, Chair, were you not done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I illustrated this for myself. So there's the district and renewing it versus sunsetting it. And then the second thing is the levy financing itself. Right?
Yes.
So in terms of elections for the financing, there are different opportunities. So there's May of 2022, and I think that's option one. Then there's November of 2022 is option two. And then before the current ESPD local option levy expires, I think it expires in 2023, there's a third option for the levy of May of 2023.
Correct. And, and so part of this is just timing up. One is renewal of the district, and then when that process is affirmed or whatever, then we can get into the levy renewal with the options you just outlined, Chair Harrington. And maybe that's a, a good time to say at the bottom of this slide is really, that's when that community engagement piece starts and that, you know, the briefings with your board specific to the levy and the financing. So they're all sort of connected, but we were just separating this kind of district renewal piece out first.
And, and I think trying to give us as much time as possible, no matter which of those three levy financing renewal elections we choose to target.
Exactly. Thank you. Yes.
So I think, Commissioner Phi, even though that deadline is for the sunsetting of the district, that first item versus the financing, isn't until August of next year, in order for us to have the maximum flexibility, this, this, if we choose, the soonest we could go to the ballot for the financing piece would be next May. So in order to do that and all the work leading up to that, we need to get going on renewing the district ourselves, which is why it's here before us today, which is the long way of trying to answer your question about why staff is coming to us today on the district renewal versus working on that other question you were just posing. Did that help?
So let me see if I understand. So you're saying we have to, so there's two dates, they're the same. The ESPD briefing, August 24th, and then the top part of this slide says August 24th for the renewal district. So it's being, it, it sort of sounds like everything is happening at the same time, but there's different timelines you just laid out.
Right. You, you're right, Commissioner Phi, that I am asking the board for both a public hearing on district renewal on August 24th, and we will also be starting, if, if that's affirmed by your board today, then we would also be starting a briefing on the levy finance, as Chair Harrington mentioned, the actual levy plan to your board and what that might look like in terms of the timeline to the ballot, the community engagement, and then some funding direction so the board knows what, what that looks like.
So, and, and, okay, so then I go back. Am I muted? No. Okay. So then I go back to that question. How do we know if the services are needed by the people? How do we answer that moving forward? Is this a part where, as commissioners, we decide for our districts and our county, or?
I think the idea is that we would have that community engagement for the financing and what services are there. But you still have to have a district in place in order to go through that work. So I believe the positioning is, yes, those are good questions to have, but deal with that on the financing side versus on the district existence side.
Jerry, did you have more to add?
Well, I was just going to say for me, the proof is the, the 76 approval rate every time we go out for a renewal of the levy. And, and that's always the proof and the pudding to me is when we, when we go out and we say, okay, we need to renew this. What do you like about it? What can we do differently? You know, what's the voter's perception of this? And when it comes back 76%, it says, yes, we like what this, we're willing to pay for this service because it's providing us with the public safety that we need for our neighborhoods. And so, to me, that's answers pretty directly the fact that this service is necessary and, and desired.
Okay, I can, I can. I won't, I won't get into a debate with you, Jerry, on that issue, but I think I, I'm comfortable having the staff go ahead and prepare and come to us for the 24th, and then I can raise those questions again.
Chair Harrington, may I, I, I'd like to ask Commissioner Phi a question. And Commissioner Phi, I think what I'm hearing you say is that, that you're very concerned about getting public opinion in, correct? And, and I think that what you're worried about is by, by, by moving this to the 24th, we're limiting public opinion. I, I don't think that that's necessarily the case. I think, in fact, it sets the stage for starting to get feedback from the public. But I, I want to verify that with Erin and with others. The, excuse me, Commissioner Phi, does, is that in fact?
Oh, no. Does that in fact, address your issue?
Yeah, I think, I think almost. So I think what I was asking is, I think there, you know, I just want to give more information to people that they know what they're voting for. Obviously, people want this service. There's no, I think the sheriff knows. I live in Alawa. I know, you know, our first, you know, our law enforcement is the sheriff, but that isn't the question, the, you know, or the discussion or the debate. The, what I'm trying to get at is how do we facilitate open and transparency and engage people in this and say, hey, this is a question we asked ourselves. You know, does this service matter? Yeah, you know, they may come back 78 or 80%, or they might say, well, wait a minute, what have I been voting for? And then we can educate and have that dialogue. So that's what I'm asking. But it sounds like, Erin, what you're saying is, the 24th will facilitate that opportunity.
Yeah, the 24th will both be potentially a public hearing where the public can come and talk about the district renewal and how they feel about that. But I think to your bigger question is about the local option levy planning and what our community engagement strategies look like for that. And I hear you on that, that we want community engagement and we start our meeting, what we've been meeting, but we start really looking at that plan to present to your board on the 24th during work session.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated. You know, what is the ESPD local option levy, right? So the, the base, I saw your thumbs up, Commissioner Phi. But I think the, the conversation about what happens first and what's the sequencing for the local option levy replacement slash renewal. I know from my talking with Sheriff Garrett, he already knows that with the current level of service in the ESPD, that the costs for salaries, healthcare and retirement is going to necessitate a local option levy replacement. So I'm comfortable with moving forward with the district renewal. I appreciated the document, the draft document that was provided to us and the report out on the, the various levies. What I also noted on page four, which is page 52 of 81 in the packet that I, I read this weekend. You know, the district is currently funded by a permanent tax rate of approximately 64 cents per thousand. And then there's the local option levy rate of 68 cents. Well, what I do know is that our general fund property tax rate is not generating the level of revenues to keep pace with the costs. And so some of our coverage for sheriff law enforcement for that 0.5 officers per 100,000 is funded, I believe, through the public safety levy. And before we finalize the local option levy, I'm concerned that I don't know that the public safety levy has adequately looked ahead to the population growth and the additional money that levy is going to have to cover in order to get the 0.5 level of law enforcement handled for the entire county, right? So what I want to make sure with the ESPD local option levy, that at a minimum, it can cover that additional half in order to get to the 1.0 target for the unincorporated areas with the hope that, that will cover costs and growth, population growth needs and calls of service increase for that 10-year timeframe. Wow, a lot of variables. So, and that's just cost. So, and that's just costs, irrespective of the level of service questions that Commissioner Phi is asking about and that the community wants to engage with. So it's complicated.
Definitely complicated.
It may be that we're not ready to go to the ballot in May of 2022 with the LOL as opposed to in November of '22 or May of '23, based upon the questions that I know I'm asking, the questions that Commissioner Phi might have, as well as questions that the community may have. So we are living in an interesting time. And I want to recognize that Commissioner Rogers has joined us. And so I want to make sure he's had the opportunity to weigh in on this presentation with any questions or comments as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You have these appointments and they don't actually come about when you think they're going to come out. You have to wait for a bit. But anyway, I've always found, Pat, that it's been a hugely successful program. In my district, it's heavily supported, as you know. I have one question, not of you so much, but maybe of the group. If there were any thoughts of changing the, the program? Is there, we, can we reconfigure and have more than one ESPD district? As you know, when we did this way back when, we decided that the, we weren't going to abandon the urban unincorporated area. And we formed this and we formed the Urban Road Maintenance District. So the idea was to provide a level of service that they wanted to buy. But if there are changes, and I'm not saying there's going to be, I didn't hear all of the discussion. But if there is, I, I can see where we might have like an LID. We could have an LID on every street. Couldn't we have an LID for different areas where there may be substantial support for certain things? Kind of like a menu in other areas, maybe the menu is different than that. And it's not that they didn't support, but the menu is different. So I, I, I'm just curious. And we could have designed it that way. We, we didn't way back when, but we could have. I, I only heard Commissioner Willie's comments about the success of the program. But if, 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 for instance, certain areas he's in feel that way as well, then maybe there's a, maybe there's just different configurations. So I, I don't know if that made sense, but you know, we could have different areas and we could serve them different in there. And I don't know that that's bad. I mean, people want different services. They have a right to support or not support different services. That's up to them. If you could take a look at that and see what that means. It might be too expensive. I mean, that might be the idea, but I'd be curious. Thank you.
That's a really interesting question, Commissioner Rogers. I hadn't, hadn't thought about it that way. But looking at the map, you know, and thinking about the, the timeframe for areas co-terminus, is that the word, adjacent to Tigard in King City and Durham and Twalatin and Sherwood? Those areas are much more likely to be annexed into those cities sooner than later. So and there may be some other areas that are more likely to come in. Now, the system would support that. But does that then put some downward pressure on that? Sorry, I'm thinking about the area setup. For, I'm thinking too far without having the benefit of some good information. So anyway, thank you for contributing that. I hadn't thought about that approach at all. But I assume we would have to take a very different approach for the district definition. Because I didn't read. I assume that with what we have to adopt on by August 14th, 2022, would have to have some pretty extensive information, maps and so forth. Is that right?
I believe so, yes. I hadn't thought of that question either.
Okay. Okay, so we've all gotten round one of questions and comments. Any other commissioners, either on what you've heard from one another or any additional comments or questions you have for staff? Nope. But it looks like looks like you have enough of us comfortable with this proposal, but wondering a little bit about that area approach. So if you could take a look at that and come back and see if that affects your August 2021 date.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. And if it, we'll get some information back to the boards that we can make a good decision about August 24th.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for your time and direction today.
Thank you. Topic seven. Washington County Audit Committee Recruitment Update. Mr. Leong, is he with us there? He's being advanced.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you very much for your time this afternoon. I am here to bring you an update on the recruitment of the county's audit committee. As you may be aware, that the county's audit is actually starting to proceed for the fiscal year 2020-21. And then we actually have a few vacancies that's on the audit committee. Now, earlier this year, back in April, on April 20th, 2021, your board adopted a new audit committee bylaw, which allows for a minimum of five members on the audit committee and then a maximum of nine members of the audit committee. And through this round of recruitment, which Finance Division conducted in partnership with O E S E, we have received five applications in total. And of the five, one is a reapplication from an expired term, and that is Mr. Mark Cooper. And the one other application, Isabella Kina, actually withdrew from the application after the application was submitted. So we ended up with four effective applicants to the audit committee. And because that we have created more room on the audit committee, we actually recommend all four to be appointed to the audit committee. Now, this is really just a briefing. And all four are really great candidates. You can see in the attachment that we have application profiles that explains a little bit more in detail of the background of each one of the committee members. And we truly feel that each one of them are qualified to participate on the audit committee. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for the recommended members. And we plan to bring a formal board agenda back on April 17th for the formal appointment.
Commissioners.
My apologies, Chair Harrington. I did forget to mention that after the recommended appointment, the committee's mix of the community members will be 33% BIPOC and 33% women. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, see two thumbs up. Commissioner Rogers is okay. I guess Commissioner Phi is okay. I just have one question. And that was in reading the applications, was I supposed to be able to access the resume links? Because when I click on them, I don't have permissions.
That is an excellent question. We can definitely provide a resume separately. I believe, as you can see, that we actually redacted a bunch of personal informations from the public record, and that is for protection of the each applicant. But if you're particularly interested in any applicant's application, we can actually provide that offline, just not in the board packet. And I, I believe for that reason that that link is turned off. Otherwise, it, it was supposed to link you into the Granica system where we actually keep these resumes. So does that answer your question, Chair Harrington?
Yeah, the, the links are there, but we don't have permission behind the firewall. So it's like, why, why put the link in?
That'll create some confusions.
So that's why I figured, oh, I must be doing something wrong. Okay.
We will, we'll bring that feedback back to O E S E. So we can, to see if we can look into the system to, to remove the link, so it doesn't create the confusions.
Yeah, the only question I have is I want to make sure Mr. Lyra applied to multiple committees, as any of them have the right to do, certainly. I think we just appointed him to the Public Safety Coordinating Committee. Jerry tells me I got that right. Part of my memory works anyway. And I can't remember if there were more. But I want to make sure that he's ready and he's already serving on the Sheriff's Office Latino Advisory Committee as well. So I just want to make sure he knows what's, what he's signing up for. Because reading the CAFR is no small amount of work. It's not just a matter of, of sitting in on these meetings and listen to presentations. There's actually some substantial information to digest. You know, it's not unlike the Planning Commission in, the Planning Commission meets more often, that's for sure. But you know, the Planning Commission members have to read the code and read all kinds of pay, issue papers and development applications. So that's all. I just wanted to make sure that before we appoint each of these members, that they have the benefit of knowing what they're signing up for. I, I just don't want to set someone up for failure, that's all, or disappointment. Though I encourage everyone to participate on the audit committee. I think it's a great way to get to know our budget before serving on a budget committee.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We, if I may respond to that really quickly, we always cover the nature of the committee, how often we meet, what kind of work is, consists of in our recruitment process when we interview the candidates. But I, to your point, I'll definitely double check with Mr. Lyra just to make sure that he understands the, the nature of the work. Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, and if, if my memory serves, because we did interview him for the PSCC. He's, he's a graduate student at Pacific University, really excited about participating and is, is going to be a really great addition to the PSCC. But I do think circling back with him, Jack would probably be a good idea just to make sure we don't overload him. Because like I said, he's a graduate student and probably has a couple of other things he has to read and study for.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I don't, I'm not discouraging him. I just want to make sure he has a good experience, that's all.
Absolutely. Actually, in my interaction with Mr. Lyra, he seems to be very enthusiastic about public services. As well as, as you can see, he has some background in the, the financial management in his school's work as well. So between the audit committee and the budget committee is definitely one of his interest areas, high interest areas, if I may say. So I'll definitely do a run of check with him and obviously continue to encourage him to participate, but making sure that he also have a a realistic expectation of the amount of work and the amount of time investment that he's signing up for. We'll definitely do that.
Great. And I look forward to learning from his questions. So thank you for scoping that out previously and just double checking with him. That's great.
I do.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, commissioners. We will bring this item back on August 17th. Thank you for your time.
Great. Looky there, it's four o'clock. We got it done. And we've been all over the topic map for Washington County Service Portfolio. So thank you very much. Is there anything else that anybody needs to bring up or heads up or anything before we call it a day? Okay, Commissioner Rogers, are you still available? Okay. I'll give you a ring on Zoom.
Okay.
Great. All righty. Thanks, everyone. That's it. We don't need a motion to adjourn. We're just adjourned. See ya.